Don't put it like that. Everybody's a son. It's more like a tribe. It takes a tribe to put on something like this.
And when Sweet Alice comes to recruit you to help out at events, you come.
She just told me I was coming. I just told my coworkers, "Apparently, I'm going."
You, she just met you at Bass Bar? And that's it?
While I was at work, yes.
I try to, you know, get involved to help people who really, you know, need their health. I like to help Sweet Alice too, when she has her giveaway.
I've been in the community for six years. Yeah, it's always helpful, you know, to get things.
When they host events like this, it gives hope. And that's the biggest thing in this crazy world, to have hope.
What we do, we get with them and we go to monitor them and talking to them and working with the love and bring that love back and get the hate out. When you give a person something, you are presenting love.
Mama's number one here in Los United States.
And by the way, Watts also has a new nickname.
Beverly Watts.
Beverly Watts.
Who needs Beverly Hills when you have this kind of community?
For more information on Sweet Alice Harris and the work she does, visit parentsofwatts.org. It was a packed house at the L.A. Convention Center as moms from three council districts were celebrated with great food, music, and lots of dancing.
I'm just so happy to be here. Welcome to the New Ninth and welcome to your celebration. Give yourselves a hand.
Today, we're here with 1,200 mothers from all over South Los Angeles, from every racial group, dozens of neighborhoods, celebrating Mother's Day, celebrating their contribution to making the kind of city and community we all deserve to live in. And so, it's a happy occasion, it's a joyous occasion, filled with love.
This is bringing mothers here from the eighth district, ninth district, 10th district, to let them know that we appreciate them, we're having lunch, we're having a good time. You're never, ever, ever too old to need your mom.
I'm so glad to be here. This has been a wonderful and is a wonderful program for seniors. Now we feel needed and wanted and loved.
It's our way of saying, "Thank you, thank you, thank you."
To recognize their motherhood and celebrate and congratulate them.
We hope that next year will be even better and we'll be back next year to enjoy ourselves for this Mother Day lunch.
Technology is constantly changing the way we work. L.A. City employees recently learned how artificial intelligence is giving them a helping hand and improving efficiency.
Today, we're having a Google Learn session for City of L.A. employees where they're going to learn about artificial intelligence and machine learning on how to better improve how they get their work done. I want every city employee to understand what artificial intelligence is and what it isn't. It's not Skynet, it's not a Terminator movie, it's not going to take over the world, but it is going to transform the way we get our work done so that human beings are spending more time analyzing and less time doing all the number crunching.
That's the favorite beginning to every conversation I think all of us have. "I've got this problem, how would you tackle it?" Our job ultimately is to help you find and identify ways to solve big problems leveraging any number of tools, not the least of which is artificial intelligence and machine learning, and then discover how we might use them in order to tackle those problems.
I much prefer the expression augmented intelligence over artificial intelligence because we're not looking for computers to do the thinking, we're looking for computers to give more tools to humans who are still going to be doing their work.
Artificial intelligence can tell you kind of how to do things so you can minimize, you know, the part of you trying to figure it out, but you still need a human to, you know, complete the task. It's, you know, definitely something, you know, the city is a little behind on, but it's nice to hear, you know, that we can move forward.
Young job seekers came out in full force for a chance to land their first job at the mall. They were able to fill out applications and connect with companies looking to hire.
This is an amazing event, a bigger turnout than we expected for a Find Your Future Job Fair here at the Westfield Mall. What we're really trying to do is get kids who maybe have not had an opportunity yet, either they're young, they maybe aren't in school right now, they aren't currently working, or maybe they haven't worked, and give them a chance at that first full-time job.
One of the great things about this event today is that the employers are here to, yes, talk about their companies and the employment opportunities, but they're here because they have jobs, they are hiring today. This isn't just a career expiration activity for young people, this is a hiring event.
Over 2,000 retailers in the L.A. market and many youth get their first job in a mall, in a restaurant, and we supply that environment within a shopping center. So there was no better partnership to connect with the mayor and his focus on the youth and their job fair, to have it as a Westfield being a partner.
I'm here to look for a job. The last few months, I actually just had a new baby and this has like been an opportunity for me to get on my feet, to find a new job.
A good opportunity for everyone, like for students and for anyone who's looking for a job because everyone comes to the mall and it's a really popular place and no one has, not everyone has access to the internet.
I think it's really cool, it's a good place for someone to go when they want to look through a lot of jobs instead of having to go to store to store applying. Everyone's here and like the people are here to hire people, so it's a good opportunity.
It's not every day we get to thank our local first responders, but folks got the chance during an LAFD Fire Service Day and as always, the fire trucks were a big hit.
Well, today's our annual Fire Service Recognition Day here at Fire Station 88. This event has been happening since 1956, so 63 years now we've been doing this. I think the main purpose is to let the community know what their firefighters do and look at it from the inside out, inside the fire station.
We came over this afternoon, we live, we're close by neighbors, and so we came to come to check out the firehouse.
I think it's a great thing. It really, you know, makes the kids much more willing to approach a firefighter, a paramedic, a police officer, anytime that there's an issue.
I'm here in honor of all the firefighters and my daughter is absolutely in love with fire trucks, ambulance, police officers, anyone in uniform.
This is our second home. We eat here, we sleep here, we exercise here, we train here as well. And to have the kids out here, they can benefit from seeing what it become, what it's like to become a firefighter.
Definitely want to encourage him and see kind of all the intricate details of what firefighters and these people that really just sacrificed their life to protect, to protect and serve. I think it's really good for the neighborhood, it brings a sense of family, community. So this is just one more layer that adds to making this community so good.
I think that like when the sirens are on, that means someone needs help. Yeah, I think everyone's gonna, everything is gonna be okay because the firemen are gonna help them and make them heal better.
These guys are heroes, you know? It's just very touching to me that I know I'm safe here in my neighborhood.
Planting trees in L.A. is one way to make our city more sustainable. That's why the Baldwin Hills community recently laid a foundation for a healthier earth.
Arbor Day is a great day as they need to build on the green space that we have here in Los Angeles and the Baldwin Hills Greenway is one of our most aggressive attempts to create greenways inside the urban context. And so, that's what you see the organizations, community members, block clubs, homeowners associations out here doing today.
When we think about a lot of the beauty that's here in Southern California that we all enjoy and take for granted, a lot of it is here because someone before us thought enough of us to make sure that it was here.
Sometimes you look at a tree and you just think it's going to be there forever, but in actuality, trees have a life cycle. They're young, they get old, and then eventually they die like everything else. We have to plan for the future, so it's at tree plantings like this that we're doing that.
I'm thrilled that we'll have new trees to create new canopy for the birds and just thrilled for our neighborhood that it will be greener and we have the opportunity to continue to plant new California native plants.
The first new dog park in Northeast L.A. in over a decade is unleashed. We'll tell you how the L.A. Zoo is replenishing the California condor count and City Councilwoman Nuri Martinez introduces a motion to keep cannabis-related products away from our kids. All this in City B. Calling Dogs of Eagle Rock, the long-anticipated Eagle Rock Dog Park is finally open. Councilmember Jose Uizar and community organization Dogs of the Rock have championed the park's opening for years. It is Northeast L.A.'s first new dog park in over a decade. The L.A. Zoo recently announced the hatching of six healthy California condor chicks. California condors are a critically endangered species with only 500 left in the entire world. For 30 years, the zoo has refined the breeding process to produce more offspring, the ultimate goal is to release them back into their natural habitat. Councilwoman Nuri Martinez has introduced a motion to keep cannabis-related products out of the hands of Los Angeles children. The motion is intended to responsibly support, not roll back, L.A.'s marijuana legalization laws. L.A. City Attorney Mike Fuhr favors the motion. One of L.A.'s iconic jewels is blowing out 80 candles on its birthday cake. Union Station held a two-day extravaganza and everyone was invited.
Almost everybody loves trains, whether they're big or small, and on this 80th anniversary, Union Station has plenty of both.
All aboard as the party goes full steam ahead. This is one 80-year-old celebrating their birthday party in style. After all, you don't meet too many octogenarians as elegant and as timeless as Union Station.
Steve is actually my teacher, so we met from dancing and we got married.
The historical vibe, this place is real. There's sweat on the floors, there's 80 years of wear, and the fact that it's still vibrant, has beautiful music, it's a place for people to come together and have a good time, and maybe they take a train. Maybe.
Old-time buildings and old-time music, part of the draw, as is the shoe shine of yesteryear. Union Station has been around since 1939 and it's considered one of the last great remaining stations in the country.
And especially in such a metropolitan area where things get rebuilt or torn down, it's nice that something of this legacy is still standing and has a function.
When the trains arrive, it's like a beehive. People are rolling out of these trains and going to whatever the next train they're trying to catch and everything. You can't beat Union Station. You really can't.
About those trains, the tiny ones are also a huge draw for all ages, especially the section where the kids themselves control the tracks.
Yes, I do like trains and I've never been on one before, but I really want to go on one. They were gonna crash into each other. My sister thought they were gonna do that.
We were checking out the model trains and a little bit jealous, I don't know how many people it took to run them. He liked them too.
It's part of yesterday and the older you get, the more you appreciate yesterday.
But for all the olden day lore, Union Station, which sees 100,000 passengers a day and metro workers, its keepers, are looking to the future. Soon, there will be a gondola to ferry train passengers to Dodger Stadium. And one day in the near future, diesel will make way for all-electric trains.
This station is central, it's important, it's vibrant, it's well-built, and it is just a historic icon.
For now, it's party time because celebrating, drinking, and dancing never goes out of style.
All aboard!
The two-day Union Station event, by the way, was free. Enjoy three days of art, pop culture, and all things drag. Learn about a travel photography exhibit during a free lecture and take part in a pop-up experience that brings together L.A.'s diverse community. All this and things to do. Come join the cool kids at RuPaul's Drag Con Los Angeles. Spend three glorious days taking in art, pop culture, and all things drag. This is a family-friendly event where you and your mini queen can strut the runway together. Join discussions of political resistance or get a fabulous makeover. It's all waiting for you at RuPaul's Drag Con L.A., happening May 24th through the 26th at the L.A. Convention Center. For ticket information, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Join award-winning photographer George Simeon for a workshop on travel photography. During this two-hour seminar, George will share exciting details about his Bali photography shoot and give you indispensable travel photography tips. This free travel photography lecture by George Simeon is happening at Sammy's Photo School Los Angeles, located at 431 South Fairfax Avenue. The workshop will be from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, May 25th. To register, visit sammysphotoschool.com. It's the ultimate social think tank for connecting to creativity. We Rise is a 10-day pop-up immersive experience that brings together L.A.'s diverse communities to explore living with purpose and engagement. Gallery tours and activities will focus on this year's themes of art education and mental health. Make change happen at We Rise L.A., May 18th through the 27th at 1262 Palmetto Street. For times and venues, RSVP at wirise.la/creativity. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning, good morning. Would everyone please take a seat? Everybody, please take a seat. Today is Wednesday, May 22nd. We want to welcome you to City Hall, to this Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonham, Buscain, Osorio, Harris, Sossen, Weiser, Caresser, Corian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, and Wesson. Ten members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Price moves. Rodriguez, seconds?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
O'Farrell moves. Smith, seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, there is a request to send all items today forthwith.
So ordered.
Items one through 14 are items noticed for public hearing.
You have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on items one through 12.
Okay, then let's hold those items and vote on the remaining. Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tab, you lay the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, let's move on to the next section.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, that brings us to items 15 through 23. They're items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, well, hold 23, Mr. Rue. All right, let's vote on the remaining items. Please, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tab, you lay the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, continue.
Very good, sir. And, Mr. President, those ordinances will be reconsidered later with 12 members.
Okay, well, when we get 12, please remind me.
Very good, sir.
So we want to move to the next section?
Yes, sir. Item 20-
Oh, well, I'm sorry. I'm doing your job.
It's my apology, sir. Item 24 is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
I'll defer to Mr. Corian. Mr. Corian, item 24.
Thank you, Mr. President. This matter was waived by the Budget and Finance Committee, but I believe it can't be heard in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Okay, well, let's try to address that. Now, you want to read the item?
Mr. President, in the case entitled Carl Mitchell et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to approve the recommendation of the city attorney.
Mr. City Attorney, did you want to chime in on this?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk and Mr. President. Yes, the item is subject to court approval, and no further announcement is required under the Brown Act at this point.
Okay, on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tab, you lay the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, let us continue. Mr. Clerk, do you want to... What else do we have? But we have 12 members now.
Mr. President, we have item 25 remaining. It is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before this body, and I think we'll hold it for now?
Yes, sir, and there is a card on that matter as well.
Okay, let's deal with the 12-vote items.
Very good, sir. Those would... Those would be items 15 and 16.
All right, so let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tab, you lay the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now, let's actually vote on the items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tab, you lay the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council to presentations, items called special, or general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, and I think Mr. Blumenfield, for a presentation.
Good morning. Mr. President, colleagues, Bob Blumenfield and I are here, and we've been looking forward to this day, but also dreading this day, because a husband-and-wife team in the City of Los Angeles, you heard that right, the Katharine Hepburn and Spencer Tracy of Los Angeles City Hall with a combined years of service of 83 years. After multiple Oscars and countless nominations, Terry Sauer and Paul M. Smith are retiring. So Terry Sauer is retiring from the city service after a 39-year career of dedication. Terry Sauer holds a Bachelor of Arts degrees in history and French with magna cum laude distinction from Mount St. Mary's College. Terry began working for the city in 1979... That sounds like a long time ago. As a proctor and transitioned to full-time employment as a junior administrative assistant on August 4th of 1980, spending one year in the Community Development Department, four years in the Police Department, and one year with the General Services Department, in each of which positions she had a brief but profound impact before joining the office of the CAO. And anyone who has had any experience with Terry Sauer has had a profound moment with her. Terry was hired by Bob Chase to serve in the CAO's office and has supported seven CAOs. It's a very powerful number, Terry. Keith Conry, sorry, Keith Conry, Paul Cowley, Bill Fujioka, Karen Sisson, Ray Serrana, Miguel Santana, and Rich Llewellyn, who has joined us here today. Always ready with her quick wit and an unwavering ability to be both forthright and insightful, and I will add selfless. Terry's outstanding accomplishments, excellent skills, and ability to work effectively with all made her a logical choice to be promoted in 2001 to Chief Administrative Analyst for the CAO's office. Terry has left an indelible mark of excellence on every assignment, from budget analysis and project management to the L.A. Marathon and the various triathlons. Do we have those anymore? What happened to the triathlon? Let's do one. She's exercised unparalleled supervisory skills for the Community Services Group, which has included the following departments: General Services, Recreation and Parks, Library, City Clerk, Cultural Affairs, Aging, Neighborhood Empowerment, El Pueblo, and the Zoo. No wonder she's retiring. And Terry, we know you love the zoo. You really, really love the zoo. And you love the organizations that work to support the zoo, and that includes GLAZA, our friends over at GLAZA. I have it on good authority that you have given valuable... Given up valuable vacation time with Paul just to make sure that the zoo contracts and concessions, RFPs, are finalized. And that's not just hyperbole. She literally did that. And that's an example of her selflessness. That is dedication. And your dedication to the city and its many departments is an inspiration to all of us. And when we have these types of retirements, then they serve to inspire us to do better in our own field. And I really appreciate hearing the stories. Now, I'd like to bring my friend, our friend Rich Llewellyn, our Chief Administrative Officer, to share a few remarks about Terry Sauer.
Thank you, council member. I want to start by saying, I think, when I first came to the city, I was working for then-councilmember Eric Garcetti. Yes, I was already older, but I was younger in my city career, and the mayor was quite a bit younger. And two of the people who certainly trained us... And Terry did learn from the Catholic schools how to train people with a certain... You know, a certain firmness. Two of the people who trained us were Paul and Terry. So it's been my pleasure to work with them for almost 20 years. A couple of years ago, I became Terry's boss, and as the council member mentioned, you know what that means. I did not become Terry's boss. But that's fine. I learned from Terry many things. I don't really think of them as Katharine Hepburn. I think more the young Annette Bening and that old Warren Beatty guy. Yes, competent, but, you know. Terry was our... Is our in-house grammarian, happy to smack anybody's knuckles who gets something wrong in a report to this council. She teaches our annual writing class, and she is both beloved and feared in the office, exactly what you want a manager to be. As you can see, how beloved by the number of people behind us from our office, who are actually... I'm going to get teary here, who are very appreciative of what she has given to us and to the city, this council and the mayor, over almost 80 combined years. And as much as she loves the city and as much as she loves this community and trying to make a difference, it's not only things she loves. She loves French restaurants. She loves food. And more than anything, she loves her daughter, and she loves Paul. And when she talks about her family, when she talks about being pregnant as a young professional female a long time ago in this city, and how difficult that was, and how ultimately, you got to make choices, and family is what matters. She's actually a role model in so many ways, and she will be a really tremendous loss. And we hope her next chapter is better than the last. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rich. Rich was talking a little bit about the family, so here's some of that. Terry is a member of a proud family of city employees. Grandfather Kearney F. Sauer, Assistant Medical Director, City Receiving Hospital. Father Kearney F. Sauer Jr., who retired as a Senior Personnel Analyst. Her uncle, Michael T. Sauer, City Attorney from the City Attorney's Office. Cousin, Anne Marie Sauer, who currently leads the LAPD's Fiscal Operations Division. And daughter, Megan Luera, currently a Management Analyst, Department of Recreation and Parks. I think we need a building named Sour. So in retirement, Terry is expected to find time to cheer for her beloved Dodgers. Go Dodgers. Take cooking classes to enhance already excellent cooking and baking skills, including making the most delicious Texas sheet... I'm going to have to learn about that one. ...which she has made for special office occasions. Okay, I'm going to get the recipe. Terry Sauer is married to another one of our heroes, Paul M. Smith, who is also retiring this year from the office of the Chief Analyst, CLA's office. And so to talk a little bit about Mr. Smith is Bob. Bob Blumenfield.
Thank you, Mitch. Well, they say that, you know, CLA and CAO, it's kind of, in many ways, like a marriage, and they have to work together, and you guys took that a little too literally, I think. So, but it is an amazing... You each are amazing people individually, and together, you have really made this city a better place. So we're here to celebrate the husband's side of this equation as well. Paul Smith, who is retiring after 44 years with the CLA's office. Forty-four years in that office, yeah. He was born in 1945 in Oakland, California, to two wonderful United States Navy veterans who served in World War II. He is truly a bi-coastal person. He spent his early life in Northern California before moving to Bethesda, Maryland, where he graduated from the University of Maryland with a bachelor's degree in political science. He went on to earn another bachelor's from the University of California, Santa Barbara, earning a degree in environmental science. Before working for the CLA's office, he worked for Vohiers Transportation, Wilbur E. Smith Associates, and a part-time job with the city's Department of Wreck and Parks. Over time, Paul worked summers at City Beaches, Griffith Park, and many other sites. We were very lucky to have Paul be part of our city family for all of these years. And during his long tenure, he has worked on every aspect of the city's operation. You want to find somebody who knows where all the bodies are buried? This is the guy. He's dealt with the issues dealing with the city council, including the CRA, the Community Development Department, city grants, elections, public works, housing, rent control, homelessness, earthquake recovery efforts, transportation. I can't even say them all in one breath, because he's worked on so many issues. He actually has one of the longest tenures in the history of the CLA's office. He's been so dedicated and has been so amazing for everyone in the CLA's office and the city council. We've looked him up... We've looked to him for insight on the rules and elections, public works, transportation, information technology, public safety, disaster preparedness, energy, health. We don't just look to him as someone who knows the past. We do look for that. But someone who has insights as to how to make things better. And he's always one who can come forward with that insight because of his years of experience and because of his real sharp acumen. Paul, you deserve to have a wonderful, long, and happy retirement. I hope the same for you, Terry, who is also retiring, as you know. Thank you both for your amazing services to this great city. We are at a big loss without you. But we... And as Mitch mentioned, it is bittersweet, because while we're going to suffer in that regard, we feel good knowing that after all these years serving the city, that you can have your retirement and try not to think about this. I don't know what you guys are going to talk about at night anymore, but you got to think of something else other than city business. Yes, so, yeah, Channel 35, I expect that to be on all the time in your home moving forward. So thank you, Paul. And I know... Well, you want to introduce Sharon?
Thank you, Bob. So now, let's hear from our chief legislative analyst, Sharon So, to say a few words about Paul Smith.
So council members, what do you get when you cross the CAO with the CLA? I've always referred to them as the C-LO. And so, and you know something? When you look behind me, you see both of our offices. And who better to represent? Paul and Terry. Are you going to make us cry? I hope not. I want to cry. But to represent our offices, this is the best our two offices have to offer. And I'm going to get so sad, because I actually don't know who I'm going to miss most. So on behalf of the CLA's office, Paul, you know, many years of service, and Terry, we're going to miss you both. Thank you for your dedication. We will miss you greatly. We wish you a long and happy retirement. We will see you.
Thank you, Sharon. So Terry and Paul have set the bar. We all now have to serve the city for 83 years. All right, colleagues, I bet there will be lots of bragging about Terry and Paul.
Well, what I'd like to do is recognize Mr. Smith.
For seniority purposes? Well, thank you very much. It's such a great honor to be here today to celebrate these two friends of mine. You know, I didn't realize it, but Terry, you and I started at the same time. I started in July 1979, so we've come a long ways together. I got to know Terry really well during the budget years when I was Vice Chair of the Budget Committee. We saw her frequently, counted on her for very- We saw her frequently, counted on her for very accurate information. And then, those very dark years of 2007, '08, '09, when the city was on the verge of bankruptcy almost every day of our work, and it was Terry who, often was, when the CAO came in your office, it was not good news. It was always, those three years, it was always bad news. But Terry did her job. She gave us factual information that allowed us to do what we had to do to survive as a city. And that's what the CAO's job was, and she did it so well, and I appreciate her work. For Paul Smith, now, many people said to me when I walked in today, "Thank you for wearing your UCLA stuff." Actually, this is my Paul Smith uniform. About the time? I rarely have the opportunity to wear beige pants and a blue coat, so I said, "This is a good opportunity to do that." Paul Smith and I have always kind of joked about being my brother from another mother. We served here together for a long time. I've been in this building for, if you take a few years off, technically 40 years myself. And the sad thing is, it leaves, with these two people leaving, it leaves us only with myself and a VAC as your institutional knowledge. And I'm leaving in August, so that leaves us with a VAC. So, I'm not so sure that your leaving is a good thing or a bad thing, but anyway, I just have enjoyed working with both of you so much. The institutional knowledge of this building has to be retained because so much of what we do, we depend on what was done years ago. And there are many times when new councilmembers come in and say, "I got this great idea." And it's people like you say, "Well, we already tried that once and it didn't work so well." Or, "Yeah, that's a good idea. We can improve upon it." It's people with the institutional knowledge that keep this building alive and well. And that's what the CAO and CLA's job is, is to bring that knowledge to this chamber for the people who are elected to serve here. So thank you for that 40 years of outstanding services, 84 altogether. I will miss you personally, and maybe in August, we'll have a joint party together where we can celebrate being retired again. Thank you so much.
I just want to say that when I first came here, I was fortunate to get the, a committee assignment, which was basically Mr. Gil Sadio's committee and Mr. Price's committee. It was combined at that time. So there was an awful lot that happened in that committee. I think we met weekly, and Paul was the guy that helped me get through it. I mean, I was the new guy on the block, even though I was in Sacramento City. The way the city runs is different. So he was that calming force that we could always rely on. And that's when I had the opportunity to really get to know a lot of the people that are standing behind you today. And I know that there is just a whole lot of love, not just in the crowd that surrounds you, but where it relates to each and every one of us. I'll tell you something else, members. Paul never, ever told me that he was married. So I think it took me three years. I would see this nice lady come up and sometimes testify or whatever. I never knew. Had I known, I would have prayed for you earlier.
It's never too late.
And Greg lovingly references the uniform that Paul has worn for 40 years. And I'll never forget, it was his birthday, and my former Chief of Staff, Charmette Baum Pooh, God bless her, So, she came up with this idea that everybody on the committee and all of the visitors would dress like Paul. And we didn't tell Paul. And he walks into committee and literally is like, "What the..." And I think there's a photo of all of us somewhere, and Greg, your uniform does look like Paul, but you have stripes on the tie. It has to be a plain tie. But both of you are, that's plain, trust me, Paul, that's plain. Yeah, he's probably got some little flecks in it. No, it's plain. But you're a class act, both of you. And this is a big loss for us at one time. It's a tremendous loss at one time. What a lot of people don't realize is that we've all worked together for so long that we are an extended family, and that we look forward to coming to work, to spend time with our other family. So you will be missed, and I just want to say that thank you for helping me in the very beginning. It was too big of a committee, that's why it's, it's split now. But I don't think that I would have done it if it wasn't for you and Vanya and Meg, and I could go on and, and on and on. And Emilio, who's no longer, he's somewhere else. But anyway, just thank you. And we should just give them one more round of applause because they have, they have been unbelievable public servants. Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Bob and Mitch, for bringing Terry and Paul. Today's a busy day, but I had to say my big thank yous because ever since I've been on council, pretty much every committee I sat on or chaired, one of you guys or both of you guys have been the staff support, making everything happen behind the scenes, answering all our questions, doing all the immense number of reports that we keep on asking for, all the report backs. So I very much appreciate everything you've guys done for my office personally and me personally. But 39 in 44 years, I won't even compare that to my existence in this world. But, but, but thank you so very much for your dedication and your service to the city of Los Angeles and the people of Los Angeles. We are much blessed and greater for that. Thank you so very much.
Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Blumenfield, back to you.
Thank you so much. You mentioned family. You mentioned city family, Mr. President. So Paul and Terry are such a key part of the city family, and I can certainly speak for my staff, my team, and it probably goes the same for everyone else here. They love working with Terry and Paul, and always did, because they really do produce. They make a difference. They are critical to our success in all of our legislation. So I just wanted to just give you that shout out as well. And without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, we give you Paul Smith and Terry Sauer.
Okay, I'm going to do this without crying. Mr. President, members of the council, Councilmember O'Farrell and Councilmember Blumenfield, we thank you so much for this honor. It has been a pleasure to serve the city all these years, and we thank you for the opportunity to celebrate with both our immediate family and also our CAO and CLA family. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, members of the council, friends, family, I just want to say how grateful To be able to serve you, the city, our offices, it's allowed us to create a life without the opportunity to work. It's, it's a wonderful experience. Never a dull day.
Never a dull moment.
It is exciting. It is, it has, I just cannot imagine a better journey. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, I think we're there. Well, there we go. This one is for Terry. Don't hide your face, Terry. Yes.
Paul and Terry, Paul and Terry, let us, and members, let us quickly recess the council. Let's take a photograph with you guys at the center table. Where's Mr. Buscagino? We're going to, Mr. Clerk reconsider item, I think it's item 24, is it? Mr. Buscagino, is it item 24? Let's vote on reconsideration.
Mr. President, item 24 is the closed session matter. Is that the correct one?
Correct.
Yes, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Now we'll actually vote on, now we'll actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 2 noes.
Mr. Coretts, I think you have another important presentation.
We're here to celebrate UCLA's centennial, and I give you the UCLA Bruin Marching Band. Well, thank you to the UCLA Marching Band for that great performance. Let's give them another round of applause. My pleasure to be here this morning to celebrate UCLA's centennial anniversary of the granting of its charter in May 1919. I speak as someone who considers himself heart and soul to be part of the UCLA Bruin family, not just because UCLA is in the 5th District, but because I'm a proud UCLA graduate, as is my wife, who graduated UCLA Law School, and my daughter, and almost half of my staff. And personally, without the things that I learned and the experiences that I had and the people that I met at UCLA, I would never be an elected official today and not have the career that I've had. Also, my colleagues are well represented. Councilmembers Sadio, Blumenfield, Rue, Weezer, and Buscagino, all attended UCLA, either graduate or undergraduate. I want to thank everyone who made today possible and for joining us in celebrating UCLA's historic centennial anniversary. A special thank you to the UCLA External and Government Affairs Team, and a thank you to Keith Parker, a former Vice Chancellor, for taking the time off from retirement to join us today, and for having a great working relationship with me and my office for all those years. I'm proud of UCLA's many accomplishments in its first century, and the fact that it's just recently been ranked as first among public universities for 2018, 2019. Now we can see a little bit of the depth... Now we can see a little bit of the depth and breadth of UCLA's tremendous impact. If we could roll the video.
At UCLA, we have so many passions and areas of expertise.
Working for greater water security. Health is a human right. Music is in our DNA.
My artwork is my voice.
Making Bruins smile.
Inspiring individuals to think bigger than themselves.
All the courage and competitiveness of Jackie Robinson.
Our ethical standards.
Inventions that change the world.
It's a place for champions.
Serving Bruins.
Finding a cure.
Inclusion.
Getting a great education.
And with so many amazing things happening, it can be a challenge to tell the UCLA story.
Developing nuclear fusion energy technology.
Teaching young thermal energy politicians critical thinking.
We dedicate our lives to addressing unanswered questions.
Engineering at the forefront of the next era.
But when we align our efforts, the world will have a greater understanding of who we are and the amazing impact we have on our city and the world.
We're a public research university.
In a global, diverse, and forward-thinking city.
Dedicated to making lives better.
With unwavering.
Service to the community.
Groundbreaking research.
That goes beyond the horizon.
A place where risks are taken.
And anything's possible.
No matter where you find your passion.
We are one.
We are one.
We are one.
We are one.
UCLA.
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 As you can see, UCLA's contributions have gone far beyond the city of L.A., but have reached around the world. UCLA is the foundation of a portfolio of almost 3,000 inventions, and more than 140 companies have been created based on technology developed at UCLA. Examples of UCLA innovations include: Engineering Professor Rajid Ghad developed technology that is revolutionizing the consumption of energy. Astronomy Professor Andrea Ges made discoveries that are reshaping our understanding of how galaxies form. Computer Science Professor Leonard Kleinrock led the UCLA team that laid the foundation for today's internet. Engineering Professor Yoram Cohen is bringing fresh water to a California plagued by drought. UCLA faculty members don't just teach students about groundbreaking inventions and discoveries; students take part in the research side by side with their professors. In fact, among UCLA faculty, alumni, and researchers are 14 Nobel Prize winners, a Fields Medalist, and two Turing Award winners. UCLA alumni have collected 38 Academy Awards, winners including Francis Ford Coppola, Randy Newman, and Tim Robbins. Noted for medical excellence, UCLA's health, UCLA Health Hospitals have ranked number one in Los Angeles and number seven in the nation, and more than 200 of their current 2,000 physicians are listed among the best doctors in America. And the other 1,800 are pretty damn good, too. Determined to be champions, UCLA athletes have learned to be the top competitors in everything they do. Bruins have won 261 Olympic medals and captured now 117 NCAA championships. We had a breakfast this morning where I noted it was 116, and they snuck one in on me with the beach volleyball championship. We've also had the most legendary athletes, the most legendary coaches, and the most legendary teams of all time at UCLA. With its grand challenges, one of which I've taken on as my own in the city's biodiversity initiative, UCLA leads the way among universities for its groundbreaking efforts on climate action, environmental protection, human health, and all three legs of sustainability: people, planet, and profits. Just to give you an idea of its economic impact, UCLA helps generate $906 million in tax revenue throughout the state annually, with a total economic impact of $11 billion annually to the California economy and $4 billion to Los Angeles alone. UCLA also helped host the 1984 Olympics, and will do so again as the Olympic Village in 2028. For the past 100 years, UCLA has also been home to AS UCLA, the largest and most successful student-run association in the nation, supporting and serving Bruins past and present and future, and now led by our very own Purya Abasi, also a fellow UCLA alum, and our former general manager here with the city. UCLA began as a teachers' college in downtown Los Angeles and has grown into one of the world's great universities. It is an engine of social mobility, a catalyst for progress, and profound insights, and for 100 years has led a way to a better tomorrow. So, congrats to UCLA on this historic anniversary. Now I'd like to introduce Claire Fieldman, USAC President, to make some remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember Coretts, Council President Wesson, and members of the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Claire Fieldman, and I have had the immense privilege to serve as UCLA's Undergraduate Students Association Council President for the 2018-19 year. Though there is so much that I have learned inside and outside of the classroom in my time at UCLA, I would like to share with you all three lessons that serve as a testament to all that our hallowed institution has to offer. UCLA has taught me the meaning of excellence. Our faculty include Nobel and Pulitzer Prize winners. Our alumni have reached the pinnacle of success in every field, and our students have made groundbreaking discoveries and developed game-changing startups. Our athletic programs have led us to 117 national championships, 261 Olympic medals, and countless figures who have inspired and redefined their fields, from Jackie Robinson to Kaitlyn Ohashi. To be a Bruin, it means not just to shoot for greatness, but to demand it. UCLA has taught me the value of service. From participating in Volunteer Day, my first week at UCLA, to serving as student body president through my last, my UCLA education has been imbued with the principles of servant leadership. Thousands of students involve themselves in service projects on campus and in the greater L.A. area, participate in large philanthropic events like Dance Marathon and Relay for Life, and even pursue internships in the public sector. To be a Bruin means to give back and pay it forward. Lastly, UCLA has taught me the imperative of challenging the status quo. We may indeed be the number-one public university in the nation, but we constantly orient ourselves toward opportunities for further growth and improvement. Student activists remind us that UCLA is not perfect, that concerted steps must be taken if we are to achieve true educational equity, accessibility, and affordability. Our faculty and researchers show us that discovery and innovation are at our fingertips if we are willing to push the envelope further. To be a Bruin means to embrace productive skepticism, critical optimism, and passionate pluralism. And we thank those of you in this room who have served as our allies in this work and who have continued in this mission. I hope you all will continue to do so as we look to the next 100 years. Thank you.
Since you mentioned affordability, I will point out, when I attended UCLA, I paid $233 a quarter. I hope to see us return to those days sometime soon. Now I'd like to introduce Cheryl Lot, President of the UCLA Alumni Association Board of Directors, to make a few remarks.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. President and Councilmembers. My name is Cheryl Lot. I am an Angelino, born and raised, and a proud double Bruin. I have the honor of serving as President of the UCLA Alumni Association, an organization of 500,000 Bruins worldwide. Thank you for welcoming us here today and celebrating UCLA's 100-year commitment to educating students. This commitment is the one that the state made 100 years ago, and the tradition that we must carry forward to ensure our city and state's bright future. It is this commitment to service that guides UCLA's core missions of education, research, and service. Bruins give back. From theater to chemical engineering, law to medicine, and everywhere in between, UCLA's alumni have and continue to make tremendous contributions to society. Whether you look at the arts, sciences, government, education, or business, you'll find Bruins leading the way. Together, our efforts impact countless lives and the communities UCLA serves, indeed making better futures for so many. The city of Los Angeles is a global leader, and in so many, in so many ways, and has provided critical support to the university. Thank you for your continued support and recognizing UCLA on this momentous occasion. Go Bruins!
And now I'd like to introduce Rhea Turtlethob to accept the UCLA proclamation and make some remarks as well.
Thank you so much. I am the Vice Chancellor for External Affairs here at UCLA, and on behalf of the entire university, it is a great pleasure to thank you for honoring the university in this very, very special way. As you've heard, it is UCLA's mission to be committed to service. In fact, it's in our DNA, and we're deeply, deeply engaged in our local community, the city and the county. And that engagement stretches, as you've heard, across so many parts of our campus, from the arts to the sciences, from the public professions, and we believe deeply that it's our responsibility to tackle local challenges in partnership with our civic leaders, and we are indeed proud to do so. So, on behalf of everyone on campus and all of my colleagues here today, we're delighted to be able to celebrate with the city our partners this 100-year anniversary, and commit to you that our second century of partnership will be defined by passion and pride, prowess and promise. Go Bruins!
And before I present the certificate, I'd also like to ask our own Purya Abasi to say a few words as well.
Hello, everyone. All that needs to be said have been said. Hello, friends. I think one of the most important impacts that UCLA has on Los Angeles and on our Bruin student body is the experiences that it allows the student body to ask. And on a personal note, my experience is that I've met my wife, Mariam Abasi, who is a proud city employee at UCLA in Kirkov Hall, so it's truly made my life possible. So, I want to appreciate UCLA and I appreciate this city for embracing this unbelievable institution. Thank you.
Mr. Coretts, I'd like to recognize Mr. Sadio. Gilbert? Mr. President, thank you. I'm surprised. No other Bruins on the horseshoe? Okay. First of all, let me thank you, Mr. Coretts, for doing this. Nothing is more appropriate. I also recognize Dr. David Hayes-Baltista. Where is he? He had to leave? Oh, my God. So, Dr. David Hayes-Baltista will remind us that UCLA was founded by Reynaldo Francisco del Valle. He was a person who just lost being the Speaker of the Assembly, but later on went on to become the President Pro Tem of the Senate, and that his origins and his initiative was what began UCLA, and then it was followed by many great other people, people like Rafer Johnson or Howard Wolinsky. The committed man to politics, Zev Yaroslavsky, a great civic leader, the great John Wooden, and my favorite, my mentor, the man who took me to UCLA in 1970, where I spent my three summers of high school, the great Dr. Winston Dobie. And we can never forget him and for all that he did, and so it's an honor to be part of this. Paul, I thank you again for doing this. 117 NCAA, so can we get those numbers right, please? You know, UCLA, we believe in public service, and it's incredible, the culture, and what you learn, and you come out, and as a Bruin, you're always thinking about how we help somebody. We're helpers. How do we, you know, make something better? And you get it, like, through the volunteer programs that the undergrads have. There's a program on campus where students volunteer their hours to teach English to the workers on campus so that they can take their citizenship exams. I mean, that's extraordinary. At some other schools around camp, the city, they might, you know, make an app and sell it, but, you know, at UCLA, we volunteer, and we do that because it's the right thing to do. And we go into public service even though we could do other things, and this is big to us. And so in my office, I want to introduce a few Bruins. I have Mal Ehlmann, who's on my staff. Where's Mal? Mal Ehlmann's on staff. He should be acknowledged. Tony Recasa, who's on a vacation. He's down in San Diego. I mean, here's a man who's committed to service. He comes up every week to serve the city of Los Angeles. He's a great alumni, very proud. Jose Rodriguez, who's leading our efforts around the homelessness in the city. He's a Bruin. I am a proud Bruin, of course, but I have Hugo Ortiz, who's with us also. Hugo's in the back. And then our planner, Gerald Gubetan, is also a Bruin. And then, of course, last but not least, my Chief of Staff, Debbie Kim. And so we're all Bruins, and it's the largest group. And the city. All part of Team Sadio, a major part of our efforts and initiatives. All Bruins. And so that's part of our team in CD1, led by Bruins and committed to serve the people we believe in, in servant leadership, and all that comes from our experiences at UCLA. So, Paul, thank you very much for doing this. Let's give back and let's pay it forward. Thank you so much. Go Bruins! Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Coretts, fellow Bruin alumni and all the alumnis on this city council, and I know we outnumber the other school somewhere on the other side of town, and it is great to see the Bruin Marching Band here. I mean, it's been a while since they've been here to hear it. And thank you, Councilmember Coretts, for this presentation. And actually, I did do a little one-year stint fellowship at the other school, but it's the undergraduate, right? I'm true blue, Bruin through and through. This is where I learned public service. Everything that I am today is because of UCLA. You know, like most good immigrant children, I entered UCLA as a pre-med biology major, thinking that the only thing you could be in life was a doctor, but it's because of my experiences at UCLA, all of the general education courses, all of the diverse wealth of experiences that you could get, where I changed my trajectory and I wanted to become a social worker. So, I am, everything, all my viewpoints in life, how I'm shaped to who I am, is because of UCLA, and I am so thankful for a great public institution like UCLA to have existed for me and for countless other individuals in the past, present, and in the future. So, go Bruins, and congratulations on your centennial 100th anniversary.
Floor is yours, Mr. Coretts.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and I made the mistake of not doing what Gilbert did. I have seven members of my staff who are Bruin alum, but I didn't think to have them here, so I will introduce Jasmine Shemolian, who represents Westwood and UCLA in my office. And now we'd like to give this presentation. Going once, going twice. Going once, going twice.
Give them one more round of applause, UCLA Bruins.
And also, Mr. President, there will be continuing part of this celebration with a community celebration in Grand Park with KCRW as they count down to the lighting of City Hall in blue and gold in honor of 100 years of UCLA. So thank you, everyone, and congratulations to UCLA. Go Bruins!
Want to recognize Mr. Rue.
And, Mr. President, an amending motion, 23A, has been circulated and posted for that matter.
Mr. Rue, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. Before us today are options for stemming the tide of influence of developers in our local government and rebuilding the public, the people's trust in their city hall. We stand at an important moment in Los Angeles' history where we can choose to continue business as usual or chart a new course, driven by the people of Los Angeles and their hopes for our city. We face a number of challenges in the city of Los Angeles: homelessness, inequality, and building the city of tomorrow. Tackling these issues requires collaboration, every community in Los Angeles, and with every one of us along, among this horseshoe. But we cannot begin this work without the trust of our city's people, and we cannot build the city of tomorrow until we rebuild the foundations on which we stand. In a democracy, public trust is that foundation, and in Los Angeles, our foundation is in trouble. At best, three out of four voters choose to skip in our local elections. There are a lot of reasons for this, and there have been a number of steps that our council has taken to improve that turnout, but it must include improving the relationship between local government and everyday Angelenos. Limiting developer donations and behested payments is not about being anti-development or anti-developer. It's about making clear to the people of Los Angeles that their voices come first and that their city hall works for them. We can debate whether the influence of developers in city hall is real or a perception, but the fact is, this is very real to the voters of Los Angeles. They are the people who sent us here. They are the people who are expecting us to represent them fairly, and they are the people to whom our democracy belongs. Before us are two options that seek to achieve the same things: reduce the flow of developer money into our local politics, bring greater transparency to our local elections, and empower the voices of everyday voters. Both should move forward to give the city attorney all the options in crafting an ordinance. This is the first step, not the last, but we cannot move our city forward without the trust of its people, and we cannot take our next step until we address this issue once and for all. Today's a chance that we just do that, and I look forward to seeing a draft ordinance from the city attorney that is effective, enforceable, and legally sound. But let me be real clear: reform can and must be made. Colleagues, I know this is very hard. I know this would change the way many of us fundraise, but I'm asking you today to do the hard thing because it's the right thing. Los Angeles does not belong to us. It belongs to the people. We have the chance today to put people first, to let their voices lead the way in directing our government and in shaping the future of our city. I encourage an "I" vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, before I recognize Mr. O'Farrell, I'm going to go straight to public comment. I'm going to call Rob Quan, Nona Rhodeus, Kathy Thang, and Mr. Herman. So please, if I called you, come on up.
Thank you, Crenshaw Boulevard. Thank you, Obama Boulevard. We get to stop Armin Obey. Armin obeys a terrorist who is taking loans from the government, and the government kept giving him $26.1 million...
On the topic, Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman?
And non-individuals from contributing and fucking the federal government and the state of California, creating homelessness and gentrification. Now we get to rule under the Trump, Trump, Trump to eliminate behested payments. You fucking Armin, you fucking Herman, you fucking Obama, you fucking Crenshaw, you fuck what the rules elections and international government relations. Fuck you, 42 USC 1983 assholes!
Okay, Mr. Quan, please, or whoever I called first, can we get some sanity? Come on. Come on, please. I called you, come on up. Kathy, let's go.
Thank you. I just want to reflect upon some of the Ethics Commission's findings in looking at developer payments in the city of LA and the influence of money in politics. Over half of the enforcement actions have involved developers or development projects. Non-individuals account for over half of our excess contribution findings, and when it comes to behested payments, over half of the behested payments over the last few years have come from those with business in front of this city. Eight of the top 10 payers of behested payments have business in front of this city. Regarding the new motion on the developer ban, I would just note that when we're looking at the Planning Department's classification of different project types, that's a fluid list, so we will want to have some flexibility there to make sure that we have something that's workable down the line, years on the end, and I hope you cast an "I" vote, and I hope this conversation is an open one, where this comes back to the Rules Committee and we have full consideration of both proposals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kathy?
Hi. I would just note that today is the 100th anniversary of the beginning of the conversation around women's suffrage when Congress introduced that motion, and that vote to expand the suffrage only matters if not only do we have the right to vote, but also a meaningful vote, that is, that the people that we choose to elect will actually represent us. Common cause is working to create a democracy where everyone has a voice, but also where every vote counts. We want to thank Councilman Rue for being an ally in this fight and introducing this motion. We thank the city council for moving forward on drafting the ordinances for the developer bans as well as the behested payments. We think it's absolutely right to get the definition of what a developer is correct, and so we also thank you for having a process for involving the public in discussing what those details should be. And lastly, we want to just know that these reforms are part of a larger movement, so thank you for voting for the six-to-one supermatch that will really give everyday candidates a chance to be part of the political system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and then we want Mr. Spindler. Yes?
Good morning. My name is Nona Randua, and I'm the California Director of the Alliance for Justice. We're a national organization committed to progressive values and the creation of an equitable, just, and free society. We've had a presence on the ground here in Los Angeles for almost five years. We're a nonprofit that provides legal and capacity-building support to nonprofits to empower them to engage in advocacy, and we are very concerned about the behested payments portion of this agenda item. We oppose any ban on behested payments, which is when city officials ask people to support public and charitable causes, because despite the good intentions of such a ban, it would result in diminished services and benefits that are available to all city residents. Disclosure is the appropriate solution to address the public's concern about corruption without making it a crime for city officials and civically engaged nonprofits to talk to each other about how to fund city programs. Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Disclose, don't ban behested...
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that closes public comment on this issue. I want to recognize Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I know that we have the Planning Department here, the Ethics Commission here, as well as City Attorney's Office. If you could make your way to the table, I have a few questions. And while you're doing that, just a few comments. One, this disclosure will help keep us from having to filter a lot of the donations that come our way during a campaign, which I did certainly in reelection, and keep us from having to return checks when we have known developers who make donations. So that's a good thing. But let's not kid ourselves. This is not the panacea, because what will invariably happen is some of the same folks on this list of definitions of who is a developer will simply form an independent expenditure, and that will help incumbents like all of us sitting around this horseshoe. It won't necessarily help first-time candidates like I was in 2013 when I had the entire power structure against my candidacy, but I was able to be victorious because of donations from the community and just, you know, getting out there and knocking on doors and making the case. So we'll all be fine. I'm not saying this is a bad thing. I will certainly support it. It's a no-brainer, but disclosure is certainly something that we all need, but we have that with the current ethics rules, so this will just be an added form of insurance, and that's a good thing. As far as behested donations, you know, I have very mixed feelings about this because this means that I will no longer be able to encourage Equality California and folks who can contribute to that wonderful nonprofit who I know. That'll mean that I can no longer encourage people to donate to Project Angel Food, which is a nonprofit that serves people who are largely homebound because of an illness that they're suffering. American Diabetes Association, Indigenous Peoples' Day, the list goes on and on. So we're really going to tie our hands in terms of how we can help charitable organizations that serve people greater than we have the ability to. So I look very forward to hearing more about behested payments and if we can somehow still encourage the charitable community to give, especially once we are invited to assist in that. So I'm sure that we'll be able to figure that out, or I certainly hope so. Couple of questions is what election year will this be in place of, both the behested payments and, of course, the prohibition on the definition of a developer? If we act fast and get something adopted, make it an ordinance, what will be the first election it would go into place?
Councilmember Assistant City Attorney Renee Stottle. This, or if the council asks us to draft these ordinances, unless you instruct us otherwise, they would be immediately effective.
All right.
So if you desire it to not be effective during this time, during this election frame that we're in right now for the 2020 election, then that's something that we can, we can write in a future effective date.
So they could go into effect immediately for 2020, which the campaign is about to gear up for, for that year?
Well, they're all, obviously, it's already in the fundraising cycle for 2020.
Right. How would that impact the fundraising cycle then if someone in this category has already contributed? Would that be a required refunding of donations?
Good morning, Heather Holt, Executive Director of the Ethics Commission. The way that we typically look at laws that are changed in the middle of an election cycle is we do do a parsing of what happened before a law became ineffective and what happened after a law became effective. I would note that in conversations that we have had at the Ethics Commission level that the thought was that perhaps because the fundraising windows are open now, it might be better to wait until the 2020 elections for these to become effective.
You mean 2022?
Sorry, yes, 2022. In addition, if there is a desire to move forward on a ban on non-individual contributions and, as the city attorney has advised, would require a charter amendment, then that would be something that would be down the line as well.
Okay, so we'll see where the conversation takes us in terms of the date we could effectuate the rule. So I would ask everyone running for public office in the next cycle and the cycles after that to simply honor the intent of this beginning immediately, and if anyone has contributed that fits in this category of developer, they return those funds. And this is a step in the right direction. I think it's great, but I just don't want anyone to kid themselves that it's the panacea that will take, you know, money out of political campaigns. It's up to all of us and up to the electorate to closely scrutinize that and, and also scrutinize the influence. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. It was a, I was glad that we initiated this process, and I was proud to join Mr. Rue two years ago now when we first initiated this journey, and this second motion that many of us co-presented, I think, has made, the recommendations that the Ethics Commission has offered us on it significantly advances the thoughtfulness of this policy, and so I want to first say how much I appreciate the Ethics Commission report because it dives into details that honestly are the critical part of this policymaking, because, you know, the devil is always in the details, and our motions tend not to get at that level of detail. So I really appreciate how much time the Ethics Commission spent on getting to all those specific things. And I appreciate Mr. O'Farrell's comment about not being a panacea because nothing we ever do in political reform is. And the elephant in the room is always the independent expenditure campaigns, the, you know, and this is a national phenomenon because of Citizens United and otherwise, the restrictions that we put on individual contributions are crumbs on the table compared to the massive influence of independent expenditure campaigns. And to your point, Mr. O'Farrell, when I first ran for the city council, two organizations put together a million dollars to spend to defeat me. And so anybody who thinks that a $500 contribution or something is, even gets onto the radar screen compared to a million-dollar independent expenditure campaign is not paying close enough attention. But the fact is, we have much more to do before we can begin to rein in the independent expenditure campaigns, and I hope that that will be a continuing effort that we'll be engaging in because everything else is moot if we don't get to that fundamental issue. Oh, gosh, I used all of my time in just saying that. So I have many questions. I'm going to start, I'm going to do this in chunks because I think we're going to have to come back. So first, I want to start, start with the non-individual contribution ban and the Ethics Commission's comments on that. It makes great sense to me to ban contributions from, say, LLCs because the public has no ability to determine who is actually behind that LLC. Other kinds of non-individuals, though, don't create that public policy issue, and so I think we have to delineate different kinds of non-individuals. For example, political parties, advocacy organizations, the Sierra Club, say, unions. It's a fundament- It's a fundamental part of the right-wing extreme agenda to ban unions from being engaged in political campaigns. It's, it's a fundamental part of, you know, the worst elements of the right wing to get unions out of politics. This ban would do exactly that if, unless we were to delineate those non-individuals. Is that right?
Actually, there are, it is not permitted for governments to prevent people from participating in the political process. And that's actually where the inter, the independent expenditures play into this, is the fa, in the jurisdictions that have banned contributions from different types of persons and from non-individuals, part of the assessment has been that they can still participate in other ways, including making independent expenditures. The balance that the Ethics Commission struck was that, yes, the murkiest information is about the LLCs, but it's also not often clear who is involved as an individual in other types of organizations, including advocacy groups and unions and corporations even. So, while that information might be more readily available to someone who does some digging on the public record, more readily available than it is for LLCs, for example, the information for voters who are trying to assess who is supporting particular candidates and issues is better served when all of the people who contribute are individuals and it's very clear who those individuals are and whether the contribution limits have been maintained.
Well, I think, I think there's no question that transparency will be increased if only individuals contribute. But that, there's a very big gap between that and deciding whether or not that's a good idea to do. Whether it's a good idea to prevent the participation of, you know, grassroots neighborhood organizations that want to get involved, political clubs, you know, the, there's, there's been, Democratic clubs have been involved in electoral politics and been an important force in electoral politics since the 1950s. And it's a way for grassroots engagement. It's a way to empower people to, to be involved that, you know, as individuals, maybe they wouldn't be. And so, I, I think we want to be really careful about crafting a policy that actually excludes the very kind of empowerment that we want to give to everyday people to participate in politics. And that would be advocacy organizations, clubs, unions, and probably many others that I can't even think of right now. So, as we move forward on this, and I see I'm already way over time, and I'm going to have a lot more, Mr. President, so on that point, I just want to make sure that, my suggestion would be that any political party and its affiliated or chartered organizations not be included within this ban, that unions not be included in this ban. And then I want the city attorney to consider whether or not there's a way that we can identify what an advocacy organization is, you know, 501(c), whatever it is, I don't remember the, you know, that could, thank you, that, that can still participate. And so, I'd like to see if we can look at that and see what constitutional limitations there may be in limiting their participation in elections, limiting their speech in this context, and whether or not we can differentiate them consistent with due process and otherwise. And, Mr. President, I have so much more, but I want to let-
Okay, that's fine. We'll get back to you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the conversation already by Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Kocorian. I am fortunate to come to this situation of not having to ever run again, not having an office holder count, so I can speak from it only from experience. And my experience is this, and Mr. Kocorian talked about the IEs. One thing we had with transparency is if a developer donated money to me or anybody else, we declare it. We show it. It's public record. And we, and we do it through a process of reporting all along our campaigns, from early on to late in the campaign. With IEs, somebody can dump a quarter million dollars into a campaign the week before the election, and no voter will know where that money came from until the election is over. So, from a transparency point of view, we've done just the opposite. We forced the underground money underground further in a way that nobody will know about it until after the fact, and that can change elections. Ask Wendy Gruhl about the effect of major, major money on her campaign for mayor. It was that major money that probably defeated her because it was public, it was known, and people resented it. So, I think we've got to be very careful here. My biggest concern, and that is something I have spent my entire life doing, and that is raising money for the nonprofit agencies in my district. I helped build a YMCA. There's a building in my district that happens to be named after me. I raised money for those. And somebody said, "Well, you can still ask the developers to give to that, but you can't ask for it unless you use the state law and we have to behest it." That forces me to say to the organization, "You go out and raise the money and kind of use my name. I just don't have to know about it." And, and then we have to go back to like the YMCA, which I raised lots of money for over, over the years, and say to them, "If you raise more than $5,000 from any of these people, now I have to be notified of it, they have to be notified of it," and we go through a whole new process, which is designated by state law, and that's behesting. I think this is a chilling effect on the ability of public officials to use their status in the community to raise money for worthy organizations like the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA's, the women's organization, whatever you want to do in your district, this puts a chilling effect on that. I would suggest today, I'm willing to vote for this today because I think it's a step in the right direction, but it is far from good. There are things wrong with this that we need to go back and fix. So, I mentioned, Mr. O'Farrell, maybe we need to come back with a motion to take up the issue of behesting as a separate discussion later on. We could come back and amend this if we pass it today, amend it and fix that. But we cannot, in good conscience, we cannot let this law take away our ability as elected officials, as public officials recognized in our communities that are supposed to be doing good things for our community. We can't take that ability away. And so, we have to come back and have that discussion. I would entertain anyone who wants to talk about bringing back a motion to do that. I will vote for this today very reluctantly because there's serious flaws, and I think we need to make a step in the right direction, but this is only a step, and we have things that have to fix. Thank you.
Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank Mr. Kocorian and Mr. Smith for the, the particularly thoughtful lines of questioning. You raised some, some, some very valid issues. I, I share your concern, Mr. Kocorian, about unwittingly disempowering people's voices, particularly unions or environmental organizations. And I think Mr. Smith raised some, some, some good questions about the behested payments. And I have a couple of questions for the city attorney about the behested. First, I do want to say that, you know, e- even though these may seem like big steps, we are still tinkering around the margins. The, the, the way to do this is, it's, in my mind, it's two-part. It's absolute disclosure of everything matched with full public financing. Connecticut has been doing full public financing. It's going well. They haven't had much of a problem with IEs. And in a lot of cases, we just heard two of them, grassroots candidates beat back IEs because I think the people power tends to win out against the IEs. So, I do think a lot of this needs a lot more thought, and I would much prefer that we get to the day when we're doing full public financing. I think that's where we need to be. Because these, the, the half-steps have unintended consequences, as we've just heard. A question about the behested because I'm curious how that would work. Mr. O'Farrell raised a, a couple of good points about organizations he, he might raise money for. So, I'll, I'll use one that he and I both might have in common, for instance. It would, under this rule, not be, be appropriate for either one of us to be making cold calls to people to ask for money for the Gay and Lesbian Center, right? Is that correct?
That would be true if the recipient of the phone call were a restricted source, which would be a lobbyist, a lobbying firm, a bidder, a contractor, and a, a party to an entitlement, and someone who has influenced you in the past 12 months.
So, we can, we, we could call other people. We could call-
Yes.
Okay. What if his name or my name were on the invitation to an event?
That would be one of the six recommended exceptions to the ban on solicitation. And if your names were included with the names of other individuals, and in fact, you weren't highlighted as the person who was singly behind it, then that would be an exception that would be permitted. So, something in writing that has more than your name on it could be sent even to restricted sources.
What about if either me or Mr. O'Farrell, far more likely, Mr. O'Farrell, did the aides right? You're in much better shape than I am, so I'll speculate it'd be more likely to be you. And we're doing fundraising for that?
Yes. That, again, the cold calls to restricted sources would be prohibited under the recommendations. However, the other exceptions, in addition to written materials in which you are not the only person who has highlight, whose name is highlighted, would be invitation or solicitations made through mass media or to public gatherings, to the entire audience at a public gathering. The goal was not to stifle fundraising capabilities. The goal was to curb the, the cold calls in particular, where it's one-on-one.
And final question is, whose responsibility is it, under the proposal, to identify who the restricted sources are? I mentioned this during the budget process because at, at LA Metro, there's an ethics office that tells board members before every agenda, on every agenda, here's where there's a subcontractor you probably never would have known about, and so you, you may have a conflict here. How's that going to work here in the city?
That ties into the recommendation regarding the disclosure requirement. We have recommended that there be funding to create and maintain a database for developers, however that is defined. And that would be similar to the existing databases that we have that provide real-time information about who's a lobbyist, who's a lobbying firm, who's a bidder, who's a contractor. And so, there would be online access to that information. And you could also ask the individual that you're talking with if they have a contract or a registered lobbying entity as well.
Yeah, that's a, a particularly unworkable scenario. I mean, you, you, the ethics will need to have the proper staff to do the vetting, and that's, that's rather large. So, I would ask colleagues that, that when these draft ordinances come back, that, that they have to come back with a, a staffing and a budget proposal. Because otherwise, we're, we're creating a legal landscape where everybody is going to be stepping on minefields through no fault of their own. They just won't know.
Yeah, and we would agree with that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Blumenfield?
Thank you. And I want to add to what, Mr. Bonner, actually, what everyone is saying here in terms of the database would have to have, the staff to have it in real time, and there has to be a mechanism whereby if you don't, then, then that, then the provisions are not in place. Because it's just, it's going to be way too onerous for, especially for first-time candidates to be able to know who is who if there's not a real-time database. And my fear is that we move forward with something like this and the date, and it's not fully funded, or it's inadequately maintained, and then you're in a lot of gotcha situations, and you don't want that. So, I want you to think about that as it gets drafted to make sure that there is a linkage there between its enforcement and its ability to actually function. I'm concerned a little bit about a number of pieces here, and the, the non-individual is, is a big one. Mr. Kocorian raised it just this weekend. We were at an event, I got to present him with an award at the LALCV. That's an organization. I was one of the early board members. And one of the reasons I love the organization, we got to, especially as a young person, didn't have a lot of money to contribute to candidates, but you get together with other like-minded environmentalists. We each chip in 50 bucks, and we, we get this organization together, and we grew the organization, and they're able to give contributions to folks. And people started caring about the environment, and that organization has grown to the point where this weekend, we had a major event where, where Paul was able to get in on it. As I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, if we ban non-individual contributions, groups like that will not be able to participate. Is that, participate in, in contributions? Is that correct?
That is correct. The organizations would, however, continue to be able to participate in the political process and make their views known, or the views of their constituencies known through volunteer work, working on campaigns, independent expenditures.
Just so you know, LALCV as a group, for example, they don't do that other work. Their work is electoral. I mean, that's why I got involved. They're, they're interested in changing who is on these boards. They don't spend time on the policy. So, all that other stuff, you're basically, as far as LA is concerned, we're putting them, them out of business as an environmental group. That's a concern. So, I really think we need to think hard about the non-individual and, and how we define that because it feels like an overreach, and it, it feels like it can have political implications, you know, that, that I don't think anyone here intends in terms of environment, you know, environmental groups, Planned Parenthood, a lot of organizations that, that we all are involved with and that we care about. On the, you know, I, I understand perception, I, you know, about the developer issue. I, I do think it's an odd thing, though, in the sense that Sacramento is, is saying that we don't, we don't develop enough, and that's why they have these onerous bills that are coming to us, SB 50, saying we have to allow for more development. The premise of, of this is that we're, we're letting developers run the show to some extent. It's sort of, there's a, there's an odd contradiction that's going on in the, in the perception world. And inasmuch as this is dealing with perception, it's something to think about. Because there's a lot of other groups that also, if you're, if you're really talking about financial interests, it's a lot more than developers have financial interests in properties. Homeowners associations do. I mean, a developer who's next, you know, or somebody who has a major business next to a development may not, may not want that development to happen, but they're certainly allowed to contribute under this, but not the person with a development interest. So, I think that's, that's an issue. I need, I, I know Mr. Rue has done a, a job of trying to, to narrow it down specifically so that it's, it is strategic, but I do think that that is a weakness in, in what we have before us. And, and I do have to add on the unintended consequences, and this is, this is true with a lot of campaign finance. And it's very frustrating because we want to get money out of politics. And maybe what Mr. Bonner suggested may be the way to do it. But as long as Buckley v. Vallejo and Citizens United are the, the, the two laws of the Supreme Court, we're going to have a hard time doing it because every time we make it more difficult, the money flows to these independent and dark places, which is much worse for democracy with a small d. And I'm, I'm very worried. It's not going to, all of us as incumbents, you can take all the money out, people know our names, we'll be able to get reelected, but I worry about folks who are running for office. We, we, we make all of these, all these new rules, and it's going to be very difficult for anyone, especially now that we've moved the election to the same timeframe as the state and federal. It is going to be almost impossible to get your message out because you're going to be competing with federal candidates, state candidates, ballot measures. Newspapers are not going to be as interested in local elections when you have all of these other elections. So, we just, we need to be very careful as we limit the ability, you know, to raise money to get your message out unless we're, you know, compensating by doing a, moving to our public system. And that's why the, the six to one is a step in that direction, but, you know, whether that's going to compensate for what's being lost here, I don't know. So, I know today, we're just moving forward with, with drafting some of these ordinances. We're not actually passing the ordinances, and, and I want the city attorney to look at it. But I do have a question about the drafting versus passing, which is normally we, it's part of the instructions are for you all to go out and have meetings with stakeholders. Is that correct?
That is correct, and we have conducted those town halls already. We felt like it was a good enough idea that we went ahead with it before the official vote.
So, that, that's not going to continue on?
We can absolutely continue to receive public comment, and we did that actually through the process of the year-long review that we engaged in. We had an interested persons meeting and five public hearings about the issues, as well as the two town hall meetings we held last week. But we'd be happy to receive comment from people who want-
Because in the instructions, it looks like there's, you're being instructed to go out and do that now. And which was odd-
Yes.
-because we're instructing you to do that, but we're also instructing you to do an ordinance. And usually, it's the other way around where you, you go out and do the testimony. It's, it could feel to the public potentially disingenuous to have an ordinance already written and then saying, you know, comment on it as opposed to the prior to writing it.
Excuse me. This is Andrea Orden. I'm very sorry. I'm one of the commissioners for the Ethics Commission, and I was pulled out for a phone call, and I'm, I was late in coming back. I had exactly the same question when I saw that in the, in the ordinance. But when we were here before, before the committee, we were asked to have that type of town hall, and I think all of us felt that it was important to have immediately. So, the reason- So the reason it looks as if it's disingenuous is merely the timing. We were asked to do that at committee, we immediately went ahead and had the town halls and collected the information, but that still shows up in the ordinance. But we will certainly, and to repeat it.
I would venture to guess that most organizations, like League of Conservation Voters, Planned Parenthood, et cetera, do not know that they are being contemplated to be cut out of the process. I don't think they know that.
I would disagree that they're being cut out of the process as a whole.
Out of the contribution process.
But nevertheless, it has been more than a year and a half, and they are on all of our mailing lists. We've had many of the nonprofits, and many of our commissioners have been particularly concerned about the nonprofits. And they, they have not expressed as vigorously this concern. It is a concern of the Ethics Commission as well, and we just have not seen that concern.
For some additional context, we had an unprecedented number of public comments about these particular issues during the course of our study, in order of magnitude greater, in terms of the number of written comments than we have ever received before. Through this process, in addition to the comments that we received verbally at our public hearings and the interested persons meeting, we received over 700 written comments, all of which supported the recommendations as they're drafted.
All the comments are one direction?
Yes.
That should tell you something.
Yeah.
Well, we're not getting the same message on that. But I, my sense is, as this becomes more in the news and everything else, you'll probably start hearing from labor unions and other folks who are going to see the impact that it's going to have on them. And maybe they're just, you know, because they know it'll take a charter amendment and other things, they're not getting as exercised at the moment. But I think you'll probably see a lot more of that, and that the fact that you haven't, to me, is actually a red flag, because that, that means I don't think it's really out there in the public about this. And that's my perception, just from talking to people and, you know, who, when you mention it, they're shocked. So, anyway, I know we're moving forward with the, with the idea of drafting ordinances and to get some additional comments, and then we'll be able to look at it, and we'll be able to look at also, you know, some of the issues that the city attorney has raised in terms of what's, what's legal and what's not. And at the end of the day, I'm all for doing things to make, create more transparency and to get money out of the system and, you know, to clean up the perception that's out there. Because we want, we want people to believe in the city and to move forward in a positive direction. So thank you for the work that you're doing.
Mr. Kretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I probably have a few of the same concerns. But the one that I would express in a more garden variety way is the one relating to non-individuals. I have a lot of the same concerns about whether League of Conservation Voters and other groups that have been formed primarily to help create a grassroots effort behind candidates of their interest. I don't necessarily consider that to be a great positive, so like my colleagues, I'd like to take a look at it. One I'm a little more concerned about is the behesting and exactly where we draw the line. So you have the most limited one, where there's a respected community organization, you have nothing to do with it, you've watched it from a distance, but they ask every council member to be on, and usually 13 or 14 or 15 of us, depending on how many of us read our mail on time, all agree to go on. Is it 100% clear that, and I don't think a single person in the course of a year gives a dime to that organization because my name's on it. Is there, is there 100% clarity that we don't have to report a behesting in any way as you're proposing this?
The requirement to disclose is based in state law, and so I would defer to the city attorney's office about whether disclosure would be required in that scenario. In terms of the recommendation regarding a ban on solicitation, I believe that scenario would fall within an exception because you would be identified as just one of several who are supporting the organization.
And then the couple other levels, one that's relevant now. So a small synagogue has decided to honor me at their annual gala. And I'm on the invitation, I'm the one honoree, so it's clearly targeted at me. I'm not making calls, but some people that are giving are people that are friends of mine, so I'm seeing, I've been told, you know, about them. So I presume that is included as opposed to excluded, even though I'm not making any calls and not actually making an effort to help them.
If you are not engaged in any of the solicitation, then it would not fall within the proposed regulation in terms of the ban on solicitation. Yeah, you would have to be actively soliciting a behested payment from a restricted source in order to be prevented from that under, as it's proposed.
So even though I, I know that they could use it, and in this case, they have used it to try and raise some money, that does not cross the line?
No.
Now, if I took a list of my friends and supporters and started calling down the list, what happens when I find myself on the other end of the line? What do I have to do? Or can I not do that at all?
If one of the people on the list of calls that you are making is a restricted source, then you would not be able to make that call. However, you can continue to support that organization through mass media, announcing something on your website that's available to the public, soliciting an entire audience as the, as the honoree at that meeting. You could certainly say to the entire audience that this is a worthy organization, and I support any contributions that you would like to make.
And, but were I to make calls to non-restricted sources, which I'm not doing because I have an eye on this happening, so I try to stay on the other side of that line, would that be allowed? Would I just need to report those over the threshold? How is that handled?
Absolutely. You can continue to solicit even one-on-one persons who are not restricted sources. And if they did wind up contributing the threshold amount of payments that you have behested, then disclosure would be required. Currently, that threshold under state law is $5,000. The recommendations would lower that threshold to $1,000 for purposes of city reporting.
But I would just have to report it? There'd be no other responsibility?
Correct, correct.
And being listed as the honoree currently, I wouldn't have to report it if I haven't personally solicited?
That's correct. You would need to be actively behesting in order to fall into the disclosure.
Under state law, you may be required to do the disclosure.
Okay, but, but again, only if it's over $5,000. So it would have to meet their thresholds.
It also seems to me that as this goes forward, it is going to be going to the city attorney's office. And the hope, of course, would be that we were hearing some of these objections and some of these concerns, and perhaps there may be some ability to tinker with language to some extent, to be sure that those are covered. And then, once it passes, obviously, it would be the responsibility of the Ethics Commission to draft guidance, to have, as it usually does, training sessions, and make it clear so that people do not fall into error without, without understanding.
And probably my greatest concern is that there'll be inadvertent violations on contributions. And I've tried, and my office has tried with frequent calls to the department, to make sure we're dotting every i and crossing every t. But having been the chief of staff to a member of the Board of Equalization years ago, where you are not allowed to contribute over $249 to an office holder and then have them vote, it is so complex. Each Board of Equalization member has a full-time staff member whose job is combing reports and making sure no one's in violation. And they, I believe, only met around four days a month. So, and, and they would meet at the same time, so you'd have a month to prepare. With the council, with meetings as frequently as one after the other, I fear that mistakes could be made. And, and I, particularly having gone through my last election, where I was asked by the media about a couple developers that had high-profile controversial projects in somebody else's district, you know, what are your connections to this developer? You know, are you a tool of this developer? And my answer was, who? That would make me nervous about being the who when you would actually be in violation of a, of a law. So if, there really needs to be some way where there's a list and there's an entity that does compliance and tells you that you have to give back a contribution, or actually, you can't, because we've also, what makes it even more difficult than the state is we have committees that can only live for a year and a half, and then they die. And so if there's someone you'd like to give money back to, you don't have a committee anymore, it's done. So you would have to be able to recuse yourself, but you'd definitely have to know in advance. So if there is some process where those are identified by an entity that's not in the council office, and we are able to know that in advance, that would really be critical. Because if we're all researching and guessing, somebody's going to make a mistake, and it'll be completely inadvertent. And it'll be a developer that doesn't have developer in their name that somebody else solicited for you, and you have no idea.
Yeah, oh, excuse me, that's way too loud. We completely agree and are very sensitive to the reasonableness of any proposal that we make. And that's why funding for a real-time database is so important, so that people can figure things out in the beginning, before a contribution is accepted. There is also a longstanding Ethics Commission policy that allows for the curing of contributions that are received when the contribution either exceeds a contribution limit or is prohibited entirely. And I believe the timeframe is 75 days following the disclosure statement deadline that the contribution is supposed to be reported on. Curing can be, can be accomplished so that there is some ability, or some recognition that in, in the heat of a campaign, it can be difficult to track. Two other things that I would note is, a non-individual ban does make tracking those contributions much easier because aggregation between individuals and entities would not be required. All contributors would be individuals, and you would have that person's name already on file. And the other thing is that there is no recommendation from the Ethics Commission at this point about a recusal requirement. So we are not weighing in on whether you should not be permitted to vote if you have accepted a contribution from a developer.
There has, there has to be some way to cure, and the, the contribution, when it's a live contribution, may not be relevant to your action, because it may not be clear that you have a vote before you. It's, it's not necessarily something you'd catch during the campaign.
Yeah.
But you could, you could find six months later that you're in violation. If you don't have a way to address that by giving back the money or not voting, I, I don't see how else you can address it. So that, that should be part of, part of that process.
Mr. Sidya.
Mr. President, thank you. I, too, also had to step out to take a phone call. We're trying to make sure that some tenants can stay in a building, and so I had to take that call. So I didn't, I wasn't here at the beginning, I'm not quite sure, what's the problem we're trying to solve? So, go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, I'm happy to answer that. There is public concern, and reflected in two council motions, about the perception that developers, there's a nexus between money flowing from developers and city decisions that are being made. So the response is one that is attempting to address the perception that exists, and avoiding the perception of quid pro quo and other kinds of corruptions is a legitimate government interest that justifies regulation.
Okay. I appreciate that. So it seems to me that, that seems to be the first question, like, what's the problem we're trying to solve? And are we fashioning a resolution to that problem, this problem of perception? One that's narrowly and specifically crafted? And that, in also defining the problem of this undue influence, I guess you're saying, or quid pro quo, are we focused on the right industries? Mr. Bloomingfield said, there's a kind of a mixed message here. We are lacking in housing. Developers are the ones who build housing. And yet, we're in this vilification of the very same people who build the housing. Right? Because there's a perception, a hysteria in some respects. There's also a concern of other industries. Scooters have proliferated overnight in our city. They are, on their face, dangerous, and yet, they're being permitted. Are they going to be part of this concern that the public has about undue influence? Uber, Lyft has decimated an industry and made our streets extremely dangerous. You walk out of your building, and you don't know who's picking you up, who's not. Are they involved in this? There are concerts that are put on in this city where we know that young people are going to die. They will go to those concerts, they will consume something, and they die. Are we, are they included in this mix? There are other industries, like Hollywood, who have a big role in the perception we have about women, their role in society, how they're treated. Hollywood has a big role in how Mexicans and Mexican-Americans are perceived. The only roles, my friends work in the industry, there are narco-traffickers, there are landscapers, there are maids, and there are prostitutes. Yet, we continue to subsidize that industry. There are other industries, like the cannabis industry. Yesterday, the LA Times reported that there was a brawl in the Inland Empire. There are other industries, like alcohol, that yesterday, somebody testified, that people consider that the influence of alcohol, the industry, on the votes taken by these people is a concern. The University of Southern California is involved in some series of scandals that they just can't seem to escape. Are they going to be subject to the same standard of review, to the same criteria? There are other industries that impact our environment adversely, and they participate in contributing. Will they be part of this? Because if there is a problem about perception of money influencing elected officials, as Mr. Bonner was indicating, this is not one that we should piecemeal. And so my suggestion is that when you do that, that you delineate the others that could be amended into this. Could be homeowners' associations, as people indicated, that that be part of this discussion. Because I support, and I agree with Mr. Bonner, 100% and real-time transparency. Let people know. And then let them make their decisions. Not the hidden hedge funder who targeted my colleague here and myself with his hundreds of millions of dollars and his IE that was free to spend and write $100,000 checks with no accountability. And so I just ask that you bring this into your report, the whole range of industries that participate in this. Because we're only talking about industries that are legal and have a role in our society. And obviously, I know you'll answer the question. And obviously, I know you'll answer the question of constitutionality on this commercial speech. The additional concern I have, as all my colleagues have raised, is my district, the demographics indicate is the lower end of the socioeconomic range. And so there are seniors in Lincoln Heights that we give turkeys to every year. I think it's the most normal thing for us to do, but when I brought new staff on my team from other districts, they said, "We've never done this." Their Thanksgiving was at The Grove. Our Thanksgiving is at the Lincoln Heights Senior Center where we're giving boxes of turkey and stuffing and food product so that the seniors can have their Thanksgiving. And they were amazed at that. That will be encumbered by this. There are young boys and girls that would line up more than a day ahead of schedule to receive the 7,000 to 10,000 toys that we raise resources for to give to them. That number will no doubt be diminished. I am the chair of an effort to raise money for the Southwest Voter Registration and Education Project. Their leader passed away last year. I am committed to voter participation, and I am chairing that committee. I have questions about how my efforts to raise money for them will be impacted. And Mr. Krikorian has laid a series of exemptions, and there are organizations that I actively support and participate in helping them raise resources because they don't have them. And I'm interested to see how those will be impacted. So I ask that you address those questions and concerns. As Mr. Bonin said, I am for absolute full disclosure. As Mr. Smith said, I am interested in walking in that direction. But as I frequently tell my staff, we only have one time, one opportunity to get it right, the first time, and that's this time. And so I hope that we look at both the breadth and the depth of this proposal, or a lack of, if it may be the case, and consider all those factors. Thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just, you know, to echo some of the concerns of my colleagues, I'm particularly concerned about the unintended consequences of including organizations that frankly have been, have come together and formed with the intent of helping to elevate issues that too often get ignored, and particularly their importance, the importance that they play in communities of color. Communities that have long been disenfranchised, don't have the resources, and, you know, we've had these conversations, even when it came to the conversations over the $5 contributions and how those were scrutinized in communities of color versus other neighborhoods, and whether or not that was consistently deployed through the ethics, the effort of the Ethics Division Department. And so I equally, I want to just echo the concerns that have already been raised, and I'm going to keep it brief, but, you know, I have a question for the Ethics Commission over the database, because we already have a group of identified restricted sources. And there has been funds allocated to the department for the creation of a database that I know has been a struggle to deploy. And so as we continue to levy on all these additional restricted sources, and we still don't get real-time information on those restricted sources, as many of us have engaged in fundraising or some of the campaigns have gone on, what is the status of that current process of completing a database that will provide the real-time information? Because as I recall, I think, I mean, this goes back even prior to me being on the Board of Public Works, that you were all engaged in that process and it was, what's the current status of that?
We have deployed several online filing systems, and they have been in place for a number of years. So we do have real-time data about lobbying entities and data as soon as it's, excuse me, as soon as it's filed regarding bidders and contractors, just like with campaign statements that are filed and are available online. So we would need additional funding to create an additional system for any kind of a developer prohibition.
So it's integrated with some of the planning processes that it was originally intended to do so that it would generate a notification? Or is it something that has to be proactively searched by individuals to assure their compliance?
It would be something that would be available for search. Nothing has been created at this point because no prohibition currently exists, but that would be the goal, that it would be part of the planning process, that someone who applies for a discretionary entitlement process would be required as part of the application process to disclose information about themselves and their principles, and that would be available instantly online once filed.
So that's the equivalent to the disclosures that we currently provide? So it really isn't any different? It's, we're listing the same thing, but it's not notifying anybody of potentially any restricted source? So, you know, again, these are all disclosures, but they're not actually doing anything to alert anyone in a real-time fashion when it comes to, with the speed with which this, all of these activities occur. It's, there's no proactive notification. And I think, you know, to the concerns that Mr. Coretts also raised, you're talking about creating, frankly, I think for individuals and, you know, in communities of color in particular, my bigger concern is the disenfranchisement of these neighborhoods being able to have an engaged conversation because they are not going to have the support of organizations like the League of Conservation Voters, organizations that are focused around environmental justice, women's organizations, when we look around this horseshoe right now, who have been instrumental in helping to elevate women's voices, that this is potentially becoming part of the conversation that I have genuine concerns about. But again, I really, my interest is in seeing how we might be able to create a system that actually doesn't continue to inhibit organizations from participating, but more importantly, that helps if it's about making sure that we have real-time conversations that prohibit the participation of individuals that have business before, that it has to be forthcoming. It's not something, it's no different than a searchable database that we can do now, and that part is not functioning. So I think to the degree that we want to have a conversation around the budget and allocating additional resources for a system that will actually be far more effective than what just a database provides, I think that's going to be warranted as part of the discussion that we have here.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. And we have a talented team of technology folks in the office now already, and they might regret that I said this, but I think that they could probably come up with a way to create some sort of notification to the different affected offices when a filing is completed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate the comments of my colleagues, which have touched upon a lot of the things I wanted to discuss, but let me just take two chunks of discussion. One, behested payments first. So I know, first of all, I want to say a few concerns that I have about the proposed prohibition that's in here and also what's not included. And first of all, what's not included in this, and that is any restriction on where the behested payments are directed to go. There may very well be situations that we want to address where it's a controlled fund, it's something that an elected official could utilize, you know, with creating their own 501(c)(3) or something and then using that for their own purposes, there could be potential conflicts or something like that. I don't know if that's currently already addressed in our law, but that's not a part of anything that's before us today. The only restriction that's before us today is the solicitation, not the, not where that money goes. So that, I think, is a fundamental flaw in the behested payment section of this. We had a, one of the speakers from Alliance for Justice talked about the impacts that this will have on some of our nonprofit organizations, and so many of my colleagues have addressed that as well. I did note in the Ethics Commission report that the biggest behested payment contributors, most of them were foundations. Now, if you're soliciting a foundation that exists for the sole purpose of contributing to charitable good purposes, how can that even give rise to a perception of any undue influence? I mean, the Weingart Foundation or, you know, some other foundation that I solicit to help a Boys and Girls Club in my district doesn't have business before the city, doesn't have any concerns about, there is no even perceivable influence that could be exercised by charitable foundations who exist only to give away money. So I think, you know, if we're going to do this, and I question whether there's any justification for doing this at all, absent the, you know, situations that I talked about at the outset, soliciting foundations, I think, ought to be excluded from this. If you want to limit it strictly to, say, restricted sources or something like that, okay, you know, at least that argument can be made. But to do it in a blanket way, I don't, you know, I just don't think that works. I don't, I'm just going to throw out some comments, I don't really need responses. So there's an aggregation requirement, and there's also a requirement that council members be, or elected officials be, that staff members' solicitation be perceived as being the solicitation of the council member, or the elected. So I started thinking that through and thought, okay, so if these are aggregated and a number of my staff members solicit, I don't know, the United Way to support their school banquets or something that I have no knowledge of whatsoever, and those are aggregated, it could give rise to a reporting requirement on my part that I have no idea that it's even going on. Let's say Team Krikorian participates in the AIDS Walk, and, you know, eight of my staff members go out and start soliciting, and each of them raises $5,000 for the AIDS Walk, for example, you know, and that's aggregated to me. Is that something that I then have an obligation to report? I don't know. But I, you know, in that situation, I don't see where there's even, again, any implication that there could be anything that would, anyone would even question the propriety of that. On the issue of the mass media exemption, which I appreciate because that addresses a lot of problems, potential problems, Mr. Coretts raised a few, where we're asked constantly be on the honorary committee of this or that. It seems like that's addressed in the Ethics Commission's recommendations, and I appreciate that. With one thing that I need to clarify, does mass media include all social media? Is it your understanding that it would? Because if I post something, you know, and I have 10,000 people or whatever, you know, that are following that, I would hate for, you know, if I ask everybody to contribute to some cause in my district in a social media post, that somebody perceives that as being some sort of corrupt action. It's, I mean, it's kind of ludicrous. So is that, is that your understanding of how it should be interpreted?
Yes, the Ethics Commission would not view that as a corrupt activity in any way, and that would fall within the social, the mass media exception.
Okay. All right, so let me go to defining developer and the enforcement of this. So I think, Heather, you already kind of addressed some of the issues about how the database would be prepared, and that's going to require the applicant for some development project to include the names of its project team, right? And that would then go real-time into the list. The problem is that, number one, the project team changes all the time, and so, and it might change after the application is submitted. So unless there's some enforceable requirement on the part of the applicant to update that, we'd be left out of the picture completely. And, you know, so I think, I mean, I don't know how you address that. Maybe one way is on the application itself to include a notification to the applicant that this is what they're required to do, that the burden's on them to update it, and so on. I don't know. I don't know if that is a sufficient fix, but it's something that should be considered.
The recommendations do include an amendment requirement, which would require an update to the information that's on file within 10 days of any changes to that information, and that's similar to what we have currently for the filing requirement for bidders and contractors. The same kind of situation exists, and we see it frequently, where subcontractors and the names of principals do change, especially in big companies, and they are required to amend their information.
Okay, so that comes to subcontractors. It's going to get really hard, really fast with any project of any size, especially with a $100,000 subcontractor or sub-sub-subcontractor, you know, who's involved in the project at $100,000, especially if that includes labor and materials, and, you know, $100,000 is not much in a big project like that if it includes materials, for example. Is that, has that been considered, how we define the $100,000?
Yes, and again, that was mirrored on the existing law with regard to the bidders and contractors and the prohibitions that exist on them. Currently, subcontractors on contract projects with the city that are expected to receive $100,000 or more are required to be identified, and the principals of those subcontractors as well.
Okay, okay, so, all right. So then there's the language about the project team including anyone who is substantially interested. To me, and Ms. Zorden, as a lawyer, I'm sure you have the same concern about substantially interested being the standard when the subjectivity of that is outside of the contribution recipient's control entirely. And I'll give you one very good, I think, common example here, and that is when a lobbyist for a group that wants to oppose a development comes in and wants to stop that development by opposing an application, say, because they represent a competitor building next door or because they don't want, you know, a development coming and blocking their view or something. They're substantially interested in the outcome of this application in a real way, and we see it all the time where they come and try and hustle us to stop a development from going forward because it's competition for them. They're entirely left out of this. So now we only have one side of the equation. The person who's seeking to build the affordable housing project is prohibited from contributing, but the person who has the retail, you know, building next door who says, "Not in my backyard" are they going to build affordable housing, they can come and give however much they want. So there's an imbalance here that I think doesn't get to the very heart of, I mean, what Mr. Sadio raised about where is the problem that we're trying to address? We have to encompass, if we're going to encompass people who are interested in development, then we need to include everybody who's interested in that on whatever side. And I think having the imbalance that we have now, just under the proposed language, doesn't make sense, particularly with that vague, subjective, substantially interested language. And then, and then I guess my last point on this is the length of time. And if what we're trying to address is the perception that contributions influence actions by elected officials, then this must be limited to that issue, which means discretionary actions of the elected official who is receiving the contribution. And as it's proposed now, with the certificate of occupancy being the outside end of this, the certificate of occupancy is not something that the council or any other elected official has any discretionary authority over. And yet this would extend the period of prohibition for, what, six years sometimes? 10 years sometimes? After a project is fully entitled and we know, you know, what we're going to do or not do, and years pass by, and these folk, prohibited contributors are still do, and years pass by, and these folk, prohibited contributors are still prohibited, when there is no legal possibility for there to be any discretionary action on the part of elected officials, right? Am I right about that? I mean, a CVO is something that is a ministerial action, that is not influenced by elected official, is it not?
Yeah, that's correct. This is Kevin Keller, City Planning. We've been in a support role along this process to make sure whatever the policy of the council is, that we can implement it at City Planning. All of our entitlements run with the land. We don't currently collect, I think, as you're pointing out, developer or interested parties. We have the owner of that application of the land, and a representative that we can contact with questions. In terms of entitlements, we did note that internally, and I know when it goes to the city attorney, we had brought up this issue of certificate of occupancy. A final certificate of occupancy can be issued five, six, seven years, or maybe never. If it's a three-building phase, they may not, they may not build that third building for up to 15 or 20 years, if there's a development agreement. So, one option for policy consideration would be linking to the issuance of our letter of determination. When City Planning concludes its work, whether it's our own work, or the work of the council, we issue an actual letter of determination, which goes into our file, and we actually close that file, and it moves over to the permitting process at DBS. So, we can work with the city attorney on that detail.
Terrific. And then, you know, well, that, yeah, that's fine. Okay, last point. The language in Attachment A includes aggregation language, and I get why that's important. But I want to understand better how that would be applied, because if the standard is that two persons will be aggregated and considered to be made a single person, when one of the persons controls the contribution activity of both persons, I don't know how any recipient of a contribution would ever be able to know whether one person exercises control over another person's contribution activity. How is that possible, that we can enforce that? And, and, you know, if somebody is, if somebody is controlling it, you know, to the extent of, for example, making a paper contributor, that's already a felony, isn't it? I mean, if somebody uses their money to try to give to somebody else to contribute as a, as a contributor, that's already against the law. You can go to jail for that. So, control over somebody else's contribution, A, I don't know what that means, B, I have no idea how I would ever be able to figure out who controlled a person's contribution. Is there any precedent for, for that? Do we have any body of law to help determine what that means? And if so, how does it get enforced? How does it work its way onto the database, or whatever?
That actually is currently in the law. The recommendation regarding aggregation language would be to eliminate the vast majority of the aggregation provisions.
And that's all great.
If the non-individual ban is adopted, because it wouldn't be necessary. There could be, obviously, money laundering is not an appropriate activity, however, there are-
Well, it's a currently illegal-
You know, Mr. Krikorian, you got to press your button again, after she finishes his question, and we'll go.
However, there could be some legal scenarios in which someone might control another person's contribution activity, such as a caretaker or power of attorney scenario. So, there are some unique instances in which, even when non-individuals would be prohibited from contributing, where aggregation would need to come into play, this raises, or highlights the value of the contributor certification, which is required, for contributors to affirmatively tell committees, "I am making a legal contribution, I am not prohibited for any of these listed reasons." And so, that provides additional support to the committees as they're making decisions about this.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kreutz.
Thank you, Mr. President. One short but significant question. So, I think the biggest loophole in our process, which I'm not sure anyone has come up with a way to address, is independent expenditures. I'm wondering, while we can't stop independent expenditures, if there's any way we could legally require real-time reporting of donors, and, and organizations, and contributions, so that if it's an entity that's innocuous, well, we'll know that it's innocuous. If it's an entity that we would consider troublesome, the public would at least know, and that would, would get us halfway towards reducing the overwhelming impact of some IEs.
We actually, here in the city, have some of the most stringent disclosure requirements in the state for independent expenditures. We require them to be reported within 24 hours, and they have to give us not only a copy of the communication itself, but also a list of their contributors of $100 or more. They also have to file campaign statements, if they qualify as a committee, just as a candidate does, and all of the expenditure and contribution activity that they incur has to be disclosed there. All of this information is on our website, and so, and in addition to that, we require disclaimers in the, in the body of the communication itself, so that funders have to be identified, who is making the, the communication has to be identified. So, we do as much as we have thought to do so far, in terms of informing the public about who is speaking through an independent expenditure.
And we put that up on our website, so people are able to find that out-
We do, yes.
Right away.
The last two years, there have been extraordinary, I don't know how to do this best, extraordinary improvements on the West Side in terms of user abilities, and, and I think this conversation makes me think that we also ought to be much more proactive in publicizing just what's on that website, and perhaps we can enlist all of your help, and your staff help, to, to show the public what's there. It is, it has really improved in these last two years enormously. And so, I certainly applaud increasing, increasing knowledge of what's already there.
And I was not aware of that, particularly because I'm not on that side of things, but I know independent expenditures outside of the city of Los Angeles have a lot of their impact, because they're able to conceal their contributors. And so, if we, if we have found a pretty fail-safe way to do that, then, then that does solve a good chunk of the problem. Thank you.
Mr. Blumfield.
Thank you. I know we're talking about a lot of issues, just a couple of quick questions. A clarification, things like the toy drive that I do every year, or when the Woolsey Fire hit, and my office became a donation center for all sorts of goods that we were then distributing to shelters. I'm assuming that that, that is not covered under this, but I guess I want to clarify it, because those are important things that we do as council people, and they are, it is getting donations, and, you know, in both of those cases, I don't know who's driving up and dropping off toys, or dog food, or any of the things that, that had to be dropped off for, for those kind of situations.
Yeah, absolutely. That's one of the affirmative exceptions to the proposed solicitation ban, a state of an emergency, for example, with the Woolsey Fire, and public appeals for things like Toys for Tots, and those, those kinds of activities.
Saying, pub, public appeals?
Public appeals. In, in other words, not focusing a solicitation on direct engagement with a restricted source.
Okay, so the toy drive's a public appeal.
Yes.
The Woolsey Fire would be as well, because we never actually declared a state of emergency at that time.
Yes, yes.
And then, another question about the, is it correct that the recommendation that you have says that if you have a candidate-controlled committee, even if it's not a city committee, for example, if you're in your last term, or your last year, and you're running for supervisor, or Congress, or anything, that you, you can't accept contributions from, for those committees, from any of these restricted sources? Although, if they don't, if these sources don't like what you're doing, they can give all sorts of donations, in some cases, if you're running for, you know, community college, they can do unlimited donations to the, your opposition candidate. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The recommendations would extend to committees controlled by elected officials in the city, whether, regardless of the jurisdiction in which that committee operates.
Yeah, which I think may bring, I mean, there's a number of legal issues that there were brought up in the city attorney's confidential memo, which I'm not gonna raise, but I do think that they're important for us as a body to discuss, because there's a lot of, a lot of legal questions in, in a lot of this, and I don't know if there is a way for us to have a closed session. I don't, I, we probably can't do it now, because it's not agendized, but at some point during this process, I think it would be important for us to have a closed session to talk with our city attorney about some of these things, so that we don't create, either do something that's not legal, or create a, a legal liability for the city, or for candidates. So, I'll just put that out there. Thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. So, colleagues, this has been a great discussion. The intent of this is sincere, and honest, and it has great integrity, and I feel very strongly that, and very comfortable to move forward with the prohibiting restricted developers and non-individuals from contributing and fundraising to city-elected officials. Totally comfortable with that, but I think, and, and believe me, it's very complicated, and we're not anywhere near being done, and I get that from this conversation. It's been a great conversation. But I'm very uncomfortable with keeping the behested payment piece of Item 23 attached to the prohibited list of developers. I think that the comments that we've heard around this horseshoe underscore the unintended consequences, how this would put us in the business of actually harming the nonprofits that we depend on, and we, we work with, to help our communities, and I think that's a real issue and a real challenge. And also, I'm not gonna stand here and self-incriminate, because I want to support an organization like Northeast Trees, or Project Angel Food, or any number of nonprofits that operate in my district and outside my district. And so, I think that we need to bifurcate the two issues, and move forward to consider two different ordinances, because I think the discussions have diverged, and I don't think they can be contained within one movement. And so, I feel very strongly that we should all have the ability for another few bites at this apple, and not just the Rules Committee as well. I think our work is cut out for us. I can appreciate, this has been a great discussion, and it's a very important issue for voters, for everyday residents, and it also, I think, illustrates the complexities that are involved in this. And as I mentioned when I stood up the first time, there are no panaceas, and that's, that's the truth, but it's good to have these conversations, so we, you know, start heading in a direction and get a little more clarity as we move forward, to make this a, a better process. And, and I think bifurcating the two issues is the way to go. So, I would move that we do just that.
Well, I think that that makes a lot of sense. There are a lot of concerns. We can split the issue direct, that, in fact, under normal circumstances, might even just request that it come back to committee, but I think it will help all of us if you give us the actual language, and then we will review it. The Rules Committee will do its job, Mr. O'Farrell, like it always does its job, and will afford anybody on this council the opportunity to be engaged. We'll send it back to council, and we'll have another full conversation on that. But I support what it is that Mr. O'Farrell wants to do, it makes sense for me, to me.
So, Mr. President, Mr. Krikorian gave a second, so we're moving forward with two separate-
Yes.
-ordinances to come back to Rules.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, in fact, before I call on Mr. Sadio, it's my understanding there's a possible another motion, Mr. Smith, so we'll go to you.
Mr. President, as the discussion is taking place, and I think Mr. O'Farrell pointed out, there, everyone around here's got a lot of "but, what-if" questions. There's a lot of things that still haven't been fully vetted, and I think we need to think about. One thing that's very clear to me is that as we instruct the city attorney to come back with ordinances, that the start date really is not gonna be, able to be met for the, immediately. Staff has a lot to do, the city attorney has a lot to do, and we've already started an election cycle. So, my motion, my verbal motion is to amend the report, to instruct the city attorney to return with their most, their ordinances, to have the start date after the completion of the 2020 election cycle.
Mr. Ru, you second that? All right, Mr. Sadio.
Mr. President, I'm gonna defer to your leadership on this matter. I probably would have bifurcated it in another sequence. It's quite evident that it's not cooked, but I do just want to say that, that the report back, I, so that I don't have to make a motion, is to be clear that those other industries that were delineated, that those are included, and analyzed, and suggestions, recommendations, comments on whether or not they should be included, and also, since you indicated that the problem that we're trying to solve is a problem of perception, we should be sure that the perceptions are well-founded, are in what the bases are, and how they relate to perceptions of other industries, so that, as my colleague likes to remind me, that perception is reality in many instances, and so are hysteria. And so, we want to be sure that we are being thoughtful and grounded, that the perceptions have basis in reality, and that we're solving real problems for the people of Los Angeles, so that we can go forward and do our work with the utmost of confidence of the people of Los Angeles, and, so, please address those. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bonnet, Mr. Ru, I'm gonna save you for last.
Yeah, just very quickly, one, Mr. Sadio indicated my support for full disclosure, that's only half of it, the other half is full public financing, they have to go together. The second is, it's a question, sort of a, a question of, of process. I, I understood we had before us a direction to, a city attorney to move both ordinances, come back with both ordinances. I understand the, the motion to bifurcate, is, does that bifurcate the Ethics Commission report? So that we're only asking for an ordinance to come back on part of that, or are we having...
Mr. Ru, you want to respond?
So, should I just, all my comments, or...
Now, why don't you just answer-
So, it's my understanding, and I actually wanted to clarify as well, that currently we're asking for two versions to come back. One version, from the city attorney, working with all the relevant departments, to write an ordinance based on the Ethics Commission's report, and then another version based on the initial motion that I and several of my colleagues here, we co-authored, which has a more narrower definition of developer. Now, there is a third ordinance that will come back, which will pull, because both two versions have behested included. So, we will pull the behested part out, and have a third ordinance singularly just for behesting, is what I understood, but all three will go forward. So, all three will go forward, and it will come back with the ordinance written to the Rules Committee for debate, discussion, and vetting.
For review, yes.
I, I understood the intent of this motion, though, was for an ordinance to come back without the behested in it. Was that the intention?
No, Mr. Bonnet, we're gonna have, the behesting piece is separate. Ordinance will be drafted, it will come back, we will review it, it will be separate. So, there will be, as will Mr. Ru's motion and the Ethics Commission, so that's primarily what's gonna happen.
Okay, just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay, Mr. Ru, you wanna...
Thank you, Mr. President. I, great debate, I, I want to bring this home, and re-explain to everybody exactly what we're doing. So, first and foremost, I want to make it absolutely clear that we are not voting on an ordinance today. We are instructing the city attorney to come back with an ordinance, first to the Rules Committee, and then back to City Council for debate and vetting. And the city attorney will work with the relevant departments, that will focus on an ordinance that addresses the many concerns that were brought up here today, and draft an ordinance that is effective, enforceable, and legally sound. And just to clarify, now there will be three ordinances that are coming back. Our initial motion that focuses on developer dollars, which was introduced by me and introduced, and co-authored by several of my colleagues here, and then the second ordinance would be an Ethics Commission that included a very expanded definition of, interpretation of developer, and the third ordinance would be singularly behested, just the behested portion. But all three will move forward. Nothing will be held back. All three are moving forward, so the city attorney can draft an or, ordinances, multiple, that will be back to our, to the Rules Committee, as well as for other council members to actually, instead of, because these are just reports in front of us, instead of just estimating what it will do, or what it's, what it's talking about, it's more important that we actually have something in front of us. But with that said, I want to say that this is a- But with that said, I want to say that this is a historic moment for our city. What we are doing today would be, if not, the greatest campaign finance reform that our City Council has ever passed. Which is why it's no surprise that we're having such healthy debates. And, and while many of us, and, and it's appropriate that we have healthy debate, and while many of us have different concerns about different areas, the one key thing that we all agree on here in the horseshoe is that doing nothing is not an option. It's due time to bring transparency and trust in City Hall, and I thank all my colleagues here for wanting to move forward and, and all the discussions that we had today. So thank you, colleagues.
Okay, let's go through the sequence of votes. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Before council, we have the Rules, Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee report. As amended by motion 23A, which was circulated, motion which will refer to, it's motion O'Farrell-Krikorian, which we'll refer to at this point in time as 23B, which addresses the matter of bifurcating the behested payments topic out of the first two ordinances. So in essence, instead of two ordinance, instructing the city attorney, or rather requesting the city attorney to prepare two ordinances, it will prepare three. And lastly, 23C, which is motion Smith-Rue regarding the start date to be after the completion of the 2020 election cycle.
Got it. So let's vote on the first, which is?
Unless there is an objection, I'm assuming that they're all friendly.
Combine them all? Looks that way? Let's do that?
Apparently, Mr. President, we should first vote on, we should vote on them individually and we should first vote on 23C, which is motion Smith-Rue regarding the start date after completion of the 2020 election cycle.
Okay, so on this issue, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
Okay, now let's move to the next one.
That would be 23B, motion O'Farrell-Krikorian regarding the bifurcation of the behested payment matter.
On that, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And?
That brings us to 23A. That was motion Rue-Wesson that was circulated.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now, Mr. President, we have the matter in its entirety.
Now let's vote, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, let's move on.
Mr. Rue, for an announcement?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to make an announcement that the HENPAR Committee, that's supposed to start at one o'clock, will be moved to two o'clock. So the HENPAR Committee will be at two o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. With that, Mr. Clerk, let's, let's now take item one. Item one.
Mr. President, item one was called special for cards.
Fantastic. For item one, I'd like to welcome Yuhan Chen, followed by Patricia McAllister. You, you want? Oh, Mr. Krikorian, you want to tee this off for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, hold on, let's get his mic on. Mr. Krikorian? Okay, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make sure that everybody in the public knew what we were doing right now. Today, we are taking up, for purposes of public comment, the Budget Committee's report on the mayor's proposed budget. There will be no vote on the budget today. That will be taking place at our special meeting to consider it. But we, as we traditionally do, we bring it into council so that the public has one more chance to provide public comment. But I do want to point out that during the course of the Budget and Finance Committee hearings, we conducted hearings for over thirty hours. We heard from, we heard, we considered two-hundred-and-six budget memos and we heard public comment from over three-hundred people every single day of the hearings that we had in the Budget and Finance Committee. So there's already been robust public engagement, but this is one last opportunity for the public to comment on the entirety of the Budget and Finance Committee's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for that clarification. Appreciate your leadership and the committee members in Budget and Finance. So Ms. Chen, Mr. Yuhan Chen, I don't, oh, please, you're first. Welcome and good morning.
Good afternoon. My name is Jinsen. I'm Senior Manager of Urban Forestry Policy with Two People. Two People applaud the Budget and Finance Committee prioritize trees among the many other issues in this year's budget. We fully support the committee's request of adding two million for street tree inventory. Additionally, we strongly support other urban forestry-related budgetary item requested by the committee, including adding funding for tree additional tree trimming crew in the Bureau of Street Services and adding funding for tree maintenance in the Department of Recreation Parks. We hope you, our council members, could support those urban forestry budgetary item requested by the committee and to build a healthy, robust and more climate resilient urban forest for all Angelenos. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia McAllister, followed by Arnold Sacks.
Yes, I'd like to discuss the changes to the mayor's budget. Now, according to the city administrative offices, you will be borrowing or you say you're going to be growing your revenues by sixteen percent property tax increases in four years. So you, you, you're hitting the people very hard with these taxes. The houses are not selling, so how you figure you're going to get sixteen percent over four years? As a matter of fact, next year you plan to raise taxes by, property taxes by four percent. Then you want sales raised, you want to raise sales and business tax receipts. Now, over ten thousand businesses have left California and a lot of them from Los Angeles. So where are you going to get all that business and sales tax from? And then the cannabis, marijuana. You, you said in the budget that you're not making the money you're supposed to make, but in this budget you claim you're going to make a lot of money. So I think this whole budget is a joke. And again, the city attorney's office hiring twenty-eight new lawyers for a total of about seven hundred lawyers, this is a joke, okay? It's all a joke.
Arnold Sacks, please come forward. Is there a Jinsy Vargwesi?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks, you're on.
Yes, thank you. Two hundred and, Arnold Sacks here, or two-hundred-and-six items considered in the mayor's budget. But I believe, Mr. Krikorian, you forgot to mention the thirty or forty budget changes you made in one budget hearing without any consideration. So I actually ask whose budget it is if you made forty changes to the budget without consideration. And considering budget considerations, have you decided to increase the amount of Nutella budget? Because you're pulling shit out of your ass so quickly. You need to have about a, a, what? A cargo ship. I believe the harbor is considering larger container ships. You need a container ship of Nutella for the crap you're pulling out of your ass. It reminded me of that, that movie Training Day, remember that? There was a conversation regarding that. But actually, what's to say? You get paid for this? Buy more deodorant.
Is Rob Quan, please come forward. Rob Quan. How about Carol Lyles? Next speaker would be Carol Lyles after following Mr. Quan. Good morning.
Morning. I want to thank the Budget and Finance Committee for advancing a budget that addresses the Ethics Commission's modest needs, specifically to program support staff as well as education staff. We've heard a lot of questions about behested payments today and a lot of those things could be answered by those people. Support staff are needed just to make sure that Ethics Commission isn't underwater and higher-level staff are being pulled away to do ministerial tasks. I'm also here in support of the Black Workers Center and their demand for full funding to get the Civil and Human Rights Commission off the ground. I really grew to appreciate racism here in LA, working on a city council campaign, knocking on doors and a volunteer chewed out a boss because I was supposed to go knock on doors with them and I couldn't go. And she said, "I have a hard enough time getting old white ladies to open the door for me and you send me a black kid." Imagine, you know, that kind of discrimination where somebody just seeing your name or seeing your face causes them to view you as a lesser person. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Lyles?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, all council members. My name is Carol Lyles and I'm representing the BWC, the Black Workers Center. We are urging full city council to allocate additional funding for the Civil and Human Rights Commission. Allocating a three-million-dollar budget is an investment that matches the scale of the problem. Black workers are underrepresented in professional jobs and have lower rates in manager and supervisory positions. I have a master's degree, Pepperdine University, Malibu, in public administration, and I'm having no luck at all securing employment. I'm overqualified. Again, I'm urging the city council to allocate additional funding for the Civil and Human Rights Commission.
Thank you. Is there an Agnes Harris? Please come forward, followed by Castro Landers. Ms. Harris, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Agnes Harris and I'm here representing the Los Angeles Black Worker Center and the need for allocating funds for the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance in, for the city of Los Angeles. It is time for Los Angeles to join the ranks. Other major cities across the United States are already locally enforced state laws prohibiting employment discrimination and have a strong budget for their local ordinances. These include New York City, Philadelphia, Baltimore, Austin, Tulsa, Jacksonville, Minneapolis and Seattle. The 2018 budget for New York's Commission on Human Rights was fourteen-point-seven million dollars. The 2018 budget for Seattle's Office of Civil Rights was five million dollars. And for San Francisco, it was two-thousand-five-hundred-nine dollars for 2017. It is time for Los Angeles to join the ranks and expand discrimination protection for all workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Castro Landers, how about Brian McNeil? Please come forward. Mr. Lyles?
Landers.
Miss, your name for the record, sir? Mr. Landers?
My name is, good afternoon. My name is Castro Landers.
Mr. Landers, thank you very much.
I am representing the Black Workers Center. We urge the full, full council to allocate funding and staffing. The ordinance rights the wrongs that discriminate has caused most of our vulnerable communities and black workers. What I am experiencing is retaliation intimidation. I am able to train nine managers, but not to become a manager. My experience also, going to work and having a black doll hanging up by the neck, no one addressing that issue to this day. So I urge that the full council support the ordinance.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian McNeil. I'm here on behalf of the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance. The current proposed budget of five-hundred-thousand dollars desperately needs to be increased. I'm an active member of the Los Angeles Black Workers Center and we've done years of research and the facts prove that we're experiencing a massive black jobs crisis. And so that's contributing to the increase of black homelessness and minority employment issues like racism, discrimination and harassment against whistleblowers and people like me with disabilities who've been dealing with these issues. The hard-working-class families of Los Angeles deserve better workers' rights protections and this is why we would like to urge for the full support from you all, the Los Angeles City Council, to raise funding to three million dollars for the CHRO. This is a small contribution for protecting workers' rights compared to many other small cities like Seattle, San Francisco. They allocate approximately four-and-a-half million dollars annually for workers' rights protections over many years in the past. Please give the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance this funding for community outreach, investigators, attorneys, commissioners, staff planning and establish equity and fairness in employment for Los Angeles City.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Natonia Franklin, followed by Trina Trailer, followed by Jeremiah Gordon.
Good afternoon. Oh, good afternoon. My name is Natonia Franklin and I was born and raised in South Central Los Angeles. I am here today asking that you provide stage-up funding to the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance. I am currently a single mother of a new generation. I hold three degrees, an Associate's in Liberal Arts and Behavioral Sciences, an Associate of Paralegal Studies and Litigation, a Bachelor's in Criminal Justice with a minor in Sociology. I have witnessed the systematic injustices that have been placed upon the black workers for many unadaptive reasons. Although my misdemeanor charges were expunged twelve years ago, today I am unemployed and unable to afford housing and pay my student loans. I feel like I've been given a life sentence and I have never been to prison. The economic disparities, police brutality, employment discrimination that I have experienced is disturbing. Me and my family and my friends are suffering from environmental issues of mental illness, homelessness, drug addiction, lack of medical resources, infectious diseases.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there Trina Trailer? Followed by Jeremiah Gordon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Trina Trailer and I represent the Los Angeles Black Workers Center. Allocating additional funds and a staffing plan is an investment that matches the scale of the problem. Discrimination remains a persistent problem. Black people are less likely to get called in for interviews, less likely to receive callbacks compared to our white counterparts. There is a black jobs crisis. Fifty percent of us are unemployed or underemployed. The ordinance can help increase access to quality jobs by holding employers accountable that have been shutting us out of family-sustaining jobs. Without this ordinance, more and more black families will have to relocate out of the city because they won't be able to afford in this skyrocketing city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Jeremiah Gordon. I am a community organizer with the LA Black Workers Center. We urge full council to allocate stage-up funding and staffing plan for the Civil and Human Rights Commission. Just about five to ten seconds ago, my coworker, Trina Trader, was called the N-word here in city council. So that just shows that racism in LA is still directed both at black and brown folks. This happens on the job site. About an hour ago, one of our members called us saying that he was called the N-word by his Latina supervisor. So this is happening to a lot of our folks still to this day. It's 2019 and black people are still being discriminated against. They're still being called names at work, being called us during slavery and things like that. So we please urge you guys to fully allocate the funding for the Civil and Human Rights Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Antonio, I've not called your name.
Oh, I thought you said?
Please sit down, thank you. Mindy Garland, Renee Arnett, please come forward. Abraun Farley, good afternoon. I have you down, Antonio. Please be patient.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Mindy Garland and I'm representing the LA Black Workers Center. We are urging you all today to allocate stage-up funding and a staffing plan for the Civil and Human Rights Ordinance. As you've heard before, discrimination remains a persistent problem in Los Angeles. Black people are less likely to get called in for interviews, are underrepresented in professional jobs, and black workers with a high school or less education experience unemployment at almost double the rate as white workers at the same education level. This ordinance rights the wrongs that discrimination has caused our most vulnerable communities. And stage-up funding will cover the much-needed number of commissioners, investigators and city attorneys that will do this work. And this budget also ensures funding for community outreach and education. So we urge you all to allocate the funds necessary for this commission. And I'm also disappointed that members have been waiting and had to leave due to work because you all have spent two hours talking about item 23 instead of really focusing on the people here that we?
Thank you. Next speaker? Your name, please.
Renee Arnett. Renee Arnett.
Thank you, Ms. Arnett.
Okay, good afternoon, council members. We urge members of city council to allocate stage-up funding and a staffing plan for the Civil and Human Rights Commission. The current five-hundred-thousand-dollar budget is not enough to hire an adequate and effective executive team and staff. The current five-hundred-thousand-budget is not enough to review the five-thousand-plus discrimination claims filed by Angelenos in 2017. Los Angeles is the most diverse city and this ordinance will cover a range of discrimination. Los Angeles is the most diverse city, and this ordinance will cover a range of discrimination protection. This ordinance rights the wrongs that discrimination has caused our most vulnerable communities, including black workers, women workers, immigration workers, Muslim workers, and LGBTQ workers. These groups have endured years of systemic oppression, and because of this, they also represent the majority of homeless, the majority of the sick, the majority of the underemployed, and the underrepresented in corporate America. Council members, you have the power to do this. Now is the time to stand up for your communities. Again, I urge you to allocate stage-up funding and a staffing plan for the Civil and Human Rights Commission.
Thank you. Your name, sir?
My name is Abraun from Africa Town Coalition, and...
Mr. Farley, is it?
Yes. Am I right?
Start the clock again.
With, uh, support with, uh, Black Workers Center.
Thank you.
You know, the ordinance is, the city ordinance has passed that it's wrongs that discriminate, that, that hurt the vulnerable black community and workers and our youth. And when the budget is, uh, not enough, we need more full funding. It needs to help our outreach of, outreach and, uh, education. And I've, my groups, we go out in, uh, in the A District, and we ask people in the businesses and how they hire practices, and I've seen they discriminating a lot against, uh, our black workers and our youth too, so... So you have to get your, to LA, the ordinance, to, and keep funding, keep a full funding, that's all, and your finance budget committee to fund it before we can keep our discrimination and, for the civil and, uh, human rights and, and stop the discrimination against black workers.
Thank you. Sheriff Lynette? Lynette Campy? Followed by Malcolm Harris?
Malcolm's not here.
Thank you. Is there a Ja, J.A.? Okay. Ms. Campy?
Good afternoon, Mr. President.
Before we start up, one second. Mr. Herman, you've been making motions throughout all the speakers. It's really distracting. Would you please stop it?
That's your, that's your final warning, Herman. Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, good afternoon, Mr. President, city council members. I'm Lynette Campy, representing the Community Forest Advisory Committee, and speaking in support of the inclusion of $2 million in the budget to provide for a street tree inventory. Public trees, trees of all types, form a, um, portion of the infrastructure of the city, essential for mitigating stormwater management, reducing heat island effect, encouraging pedestrian routes. However, we lack the data at this time to make informed decisions about proper funding. A, um, professional tree inventory would include not just the location, but also the species, the condition, the size of the trees, so that there can be a, a comprehensive holistic plan to address such things as environmental inequity in the city and also sustainability, where we are aware of which species are flourishing, which are not. I urge you to include that, that tree inventory money, and it will also allow us to be eligible for Cal FIRE funding for an urban forest management fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Malcolm Harris? Ja? How about, uh, Cat Lego? Good afternoon.
Yo, um, my name is Kyle Ling. I'm a single representative of Africa Town Coalition. I was wanting to come here too, is that we'd like to be part of a commission, the Human Rights, Civil Rights Commission. We need full funding because we right here doing a six-month project, talking about holding these businesses accountable for not hiring black people. We black people make up over 50% of people that's unemployed, over 40% of people that's, um, homeless. So we, so when it comes to unemployment, you got, um, mass incarceration, all that ties to homelessness. So we've been putting up a team for six months straight to pressure the businesses to hire black people in the black community. That's unacceptable. You got all these foreign businesses like these Korean businesses that's not hiring black people, and they getting our money, so we need, want them to hire. If they don't continue to start hiring us, we gonna pressure them and shut them down. Thank you.
Thank you. How about, uh, Julia Smith? Julia Smith, followed by Lisa Simpson? And, uh, Mr. Godson? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council. Uh, my name is Julia Smith, and I'm an SEIU 2015, um, member organizer. Today, I'm very proud to stand with the Black Workers Center, and I just want you to understand that what they're asking for, um, is not for help, it's not for, uh, a handout. They're asking for momentum. They're here fighting for justice, not just for the community, um, but justice in the workplace. So we know that you have the power, um, to do the right thing and to extend yourselves with compassion, please. And, um, I'm a UC Berkeley grad, and today we had fine entertainment from UCLA, but many people from our community will not have the opportunity to go to those fine universities, and they will be going into the workplace. And when they go there, we want them to know that they have, uh, they will be respected and protected. So please, um, do the right thing, extend yourselves to the Black Workers Center. I'm going to thank you in advance for your support, and Black Workers Center, fight, fight, fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Simpson? Followed by Mr. Godson?
Good day, LA City Council. My name is, my name is, this is, I'm sorry. My name is Lisa Idkibili Simpson. Idkibili stands for "I don't know you, but I love you," which is the campaign slogan for my 2020 U.S. presidential candidacy, running on my own political party, the United Human Race Party. I came to begin building relations in order to attain the one and only thing that people from every country and every period of time have demanded...
Hold her time, please, Lisa. Lisa, hold on, hold her time. You need to speak on the item that's before us. That's item number one.
...and I haven't eaten or taken the bathroom break in three hours, and so I must go, and this does relate...
So do you want to speak on general public comment? Okay, just let her go.
...that we talk about. Is it okay to reset the time at 45 seconds?
No, you're not speaking of the item, ma'am.
I am speaking on the item. I'm going to...
Speak of item number one, that's your final warning.
There's people cursing and calling you guys, calling you names, and you didn't interrupt those people. We both have 18 months to achieve peace and love, at the very least for the citizens of LA. Shouldn't be too hard. We are the city of angels, for God's sake. Pun intended. Question: When are angelic forces going to lead the city of angels? Hell, when are there just going to be less demons running around? Pun intended. Um, I'll just end with saying peace and love should be spoken on in every single agenda, on, on every single agenda item.
Mr. Godson, you're on? Mr. Godson? Billian Godson?
We really appreciate it. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. How about a Dan? Is Dan in?
Council members, um, I know you're going to approve the budget, but you should know that if anybody in the city has a dog license, you do not have to pay your dog license because if you just ignore your bill from LA Animal Services, it will fall out of the system, and the city doesn't only get a loss of the revenue for the current year, the city will lose the revenue for each year of the rest of that dog's life. Ron Galperin knows that because Mr. Wesson asked me to write a report for him five years ago. Mr. Coretz is aware that Animal Services is also withholding public documents of this failure to collect hundreds of thousands of dollars. So even though you're not going to do that, I'm here to use this one minute to tell people, if you just ignore your dog license renewal, you will never hear from Animal Services again, not for the, any of the years for the rest of your dog's life. Animal Services, Mr. Galperin, city council has been made aware they don't care. Ignore your dog license. Thank you.
Okay, Herman, you're on? Herman? Followed by Antonia Ramirez. And it looks like the last speaker on this item is Julia Smith. Antonia can make her way towards the podium. Herman's taking his sweet time. Why don't you go before him, Antonia? Go ahead.
Niggers are not above the law. No money to the Human Relations Commission because this protected class of people are nothing more than combative and hostile, and they bully innocent people with threats of violence and destruction to their property. And yet they cry racism, discrimination, inequality, and bigotry, and everything else while they're pounding and punching...
Stay to the item.
...and jumping and destroying you and ruining you and attacking you. Now this shit has to end. People are not stupid, nor are they blind.
Last warning, stick to the item, Antonia.
These niggers are combative. They are violent. They are wicked, and they are malicious. Set the record straight and start being fair. Start being fair.
Okay. So you just forfeited your time. You just forfeited your time, Antonia. You know the rules here. Next speaker is Herman.
Herman, stand up.
Okay. Thank you. Sit down. Okay, please escort her out. She's now disrupting this meeting. Thank you very much. See to the door? Antonia, you know the rules. Follow them, you know the rules. Okay. Goodbye. Goodbye.
Do you know what number we're on, sir? Because I'm kind of confused. We've been here for like two hours, three and a half hours. Can you tell me what number we're on, please?
Item number one.
I, 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 I...
Hold on. Let's hold Mr. Herman.
Hold this time, hold this time.
So, Ms., hold it, Mr. Herman. Ms. Ramirez, you've been ordered removed. You're disrupting the meeting.
[shouting] Fuck, fuck, fuck!
Ms. Ramirez...
Antonio continues to disrupt this meeting for the record.
[shouting] Fucking nigger!
Antonio Ramirez, you're still disrupting this meeting?
I'm sorry, the meeting is disrupted.
Okay, goodbye.
[shouting] Fuck, fuck, fuck!
Goodbye.
Okay.
Have a blessed day.
Okay, let, let's, let's wait till Ms. Ramirez is actually out of the room.
[shouting] Fucking nigger!
And she's still shouting all the way out.
[shouting] Fucking nigger!
And our apologies, we have to wait till she's gone. All right, uh, why don't you start Herman's clock?
Can you start my clock, please?
Over, give him his one minute.
Please, what was my one minute?
Sorry. Sorry, guys. Go ahead.
There's just so many distractions about the budget. Everybody wants to complain about the fucking budget, but the fucking budget is, is, is unconstitutional because it doesn't protect the safety of your speakers. And the Los Angeles City, Los Angeles, has retaliated against these motions of resolutions because of that of Lake Balboa, they got neighborhood councils who don't like a white motherfucker like me in their community because I'm homeless.
Stick to the item. Speak to the item.
And the issue on homelessness and the community impact statement, yes, there was nothing in Arroyo Seco. Mr. Arroyo Seco Neighborhood Council don't represent me. And El Sereno, the Lincoln Heights, why, why, why are we talking about the mayor's proposal? Because the mayor, Eric Garcetti, fuck you, Eric Garcetti, just because I'm disabled. Fuck you, Eric Garcetti, and fuck the budget, you fucking creeps.
Julia Smith? Is there Julia Smith here? Okay, so with item one that's before us, we will close public hearing and continue this matter till tomorrow's special, uh, meeting at 9:00 AM.
If we continue it.
Okay, so with that?
Very good, sir.
What's before us?
What do we have?
Mr. President, uh, we have a number of items. Perhaps we should take, uh, a multiple comment?
Very good. Let's do that. Uh, let's bring up Herman. He'll have, um, one minute to speak on items, your multiple items that you pulled. Herman, you're on? So again, one minute on your multiple items that you pulled, and then we'll give you one minute of general public comment.
So, so, so now, ladies and gentlemen, for the two and a half hours, you know, we're going to talk about the report. That, 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 and, and Mr. Ru's, uh, relative street lighting, fuck your street lightings, asshole. Then you go to, uh, item number three in CD5, that fucking UCLA fat pig off of Venice Boulevard, fuck your street lighting too. Then you go to that fucking item number four on CD11, that fucking faggot, fuck your street lightings too. And then you're gonna go to item number one, thank you, Mrs. Sadio, for putting light in our community, bro. Then you're gonna go to item number six with that CD6 fat cunt bitch with street lighting when she approves of those fucking went-backs that come in there and fuck up our community. Then you go to CD7, that other CD6 fat fucking bitch, get a new dress. Then you go to CD8, that fucking asshole on CD3, fuck all you assholes and you are stupid motherfuckers. Now, behested! Security Assembly Bill 1753, immigration payments prohibit evil contributing motherfuckers and fundraisings. Did Dell Richardson and ass, of ass associations have a relocation assistance contract with the Figaro Project? What did you say about that, Price, after you fucked Wayne Spindler, you fucking nigger, on Inplum? Yesterday, you kicked him out in Plumb. You're a white motherfucking politician, fool of shit, Mr. Price. Fuck you. And then the fundraising in developers with Armin, Armin, Armin in the fucking square, taking loans, taking bribes, taking money, taking our lives because you fucking don't help homeless people. HHH! Fuck the city attorney, fuck the DA, tell them, little boozy, and fuck LA, and fuck you two developers. Fuck Dell Richardson, bitch.
All right. Stop disrupting this meeting. Patricia, you're on? Okay, you got one minute for your multiple cards, as well as one minute general public comment.
I have, uh, number, uh, 25 here where you want to, um, support the Senate Bill 630 to stop, uh, slavery and human trafficking. Now this city council is, you're hypocrites. You're the ones who agree with Governor Brown when he signed SB 1322 legalizing child prostitution. Now what is happening now is parents who are starving are prostituting their children. Children come to me, want some Nikes or whatnot, and they're going out there prostituting. When I tell them, I say, I can't tell them anymore, you, you get a bad record, you go to jail or something, a juvie, they, because that doesn't happen anymore. So you've given children, teenagers, a reason to go out prostitute. Now once a child or anyone really starts prostituting, that continues for the rest of their lives because when they fall on hard times, they go out and prostitute. So now you're talking about, you're concerned about trafficking and slavery. I'm sure they're coming to California. I heard a mother tell a guy, "You hurt my daughter last night." Girl was about 11 years old. So thi- this is a hypocritical, uh, council here. Now, my public comment is about, and Mr. President, you didn't put this on the agenda that we could speak on, but about these contracts and these, you guys getting money from developers. I spoke on this. You had on the agenda that this company got a million-dollar, couple of million-dollar contract, and he had to kick back $1 million. And I asked you, I said, "Why should he have to kick back $1 million?" And on the agenda, you said, "We will find something to do with that $1 million. We'll find something to do with it." I know what you're going to find to do with it. Stuff it in your pockets. Now here's the deal. I think developers are complaining. You're putting pressure on developers to give them, to kick back money to you in order to get contracts. I believe they're the ones who want these new, uh, ethics rules, the developers. And you guys are not only, I think, stealing the money that you're getting for HHH and homeless money and all of that, you're, you're pressuring developers to give you money. Once they stop giving you money, you out of a job. That's how most of you are getting your money, through these developers, and you're pressuring them, if they want a contract, they gotta kick back money. You even put, you bold enough to even put it on the agenda to cover your behinds. I hope we get this ethics rule passed.
Okay, is there Hunter Jim in the audience? Hunter Jim?
Arnold Sachs.
Okay, Arnold Sachs. Okay, one minute. You pulled, uh, item seven. So we'll give you one minute on item seven and one minute on general public comment.
Oh, whatever. Yes, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. Thank you for waking me up from that nap. Uh, street lighting, street lighting districts. Uh, again, I suggest that eliminating districts, eliminating neighborhood councils, eliminating anything with a neighborhood, and creating your own homeowners association. Herb Wesson, you were in housing. You were the head of housing when, like, 10 years ago. You would know about homeowners associations and the power that would be involved in that, that would be granted to the public in their homes, that they would have self-authorization ruling in their community. I don't know why you haven't said anything about it. I don't know why you haven't said anything about it. You've been in housing for over 10 years, and you're sitting on your butt. I don't understand that, with all that ability, and you hear the people talking about complaining, and yet you don't do jack shit. How come, Herb, and you're gonna take that attitude to the county? That sounds like a real winner. So, my public comment is about the Grand Avenue Project, and congratulations on the city on moving MICLA funds into the Grand Avenue Project. My question is, the Grand Avenue Project included low-income housing, supposedly, with HHH funding. MICLA funding is not supposed to be used for low-income housing, or is it? Will that low-income housing be eliminated from the Grand Avenue Project? And if it's eliminated, then the company that's involved in the Grand Avenue Project won't be committed to building any low-income housing. And if they use MICLA funding for low-income housing, then they can use MICLA funding all throughout the city. Why isn't that happening? Because they can still use MICLA funding throughout the city. And Mr. Rue, they may have moved those people over to Hilda Salisa's district, but the guy still wants them back. Save face, people are coming.
Sir Rob Kwan, please come forward. Okay, Mr. Kwan's gone. Okay, let's take item two, Julia Smith. Leon Max, is Leon Max here? How about Matthew Carlyle? Sorin Kirk? Jennifer Brennan? Okay, seeing none. Let's now take item two through 12, and item 25. Let's open the roll. Let me know when you're ready. Very good. Now, let's close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those items are approved. Okay, let's take general public comment, Zach Strasters. Zach?
You guys might have already voted on it. Two through 12, 25.
Zach? Come on forward.
I mean, it's Corey.
Your name, sir?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine. Hey, good morning, or afternoon, nearly evening. Zach Strasters with the Arms Organization. And first of all, I'd just like to say thank you for taking the time to hear everybody out. Obviously, not everybody comes with the same attitude, but I have a reverence and respect for city councils, so I thank you for your time and your attention today. Here, just again, to remind you about the need to protect jobs in Los Angeles. And as I sat and I listened to some of the different organizations, there's a repeating motif about the need to protect economy. And so, I want to bring that point up. A lot of the youth organizations that my organization works with are really focused on making sure that there are good, family-sustaining jobs available to youth. It's one of the best deterrents from gang involvement. It's one of the best deterrents against youth getting involved in drug sales and trafficking. So, again, when you hear about legislation that's coming forward, or motions that are coming forward, that would restrict union jobs or family-career-building jobs, really think about the impact on the community. Thanks for your time, enjoy your day.
Thank you. Your name, sir? Did you fill out a card?
I did, yes, sir.
Go ahead, come forward, your name, sir?
My name's Corey Schmidt.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, I signed up for items two through 12 and 25. Not sure why I didn't go through.
Let's do this, so just give him, he has two minutes of those items, multiple cards, and then we'll give him your one-minute general public comment.
Okay, so, I don't have too much to say, but due to, okay, so I'll just start off. So, two through 12 is the lighting districts. I have to, based on reasons that I've kind of already expressed in my previous communications, and due to formalities, I have to express my dissent for these items. In terms of number 17 for air quality, I wasn't really able to read the report enough, but mentioned something about formaldehyde in the air, kind of sketched me out. Some more info on that would be kind of cool. Number 18, in terms of the historic declaration for the, I guess, Aretha Franklin saying at the church there, I just wanted to express approval for that. And then number 25, not sure the extent of the bill yet, but I just wanted to express support for any efforts to reduce human trafficking. So, I don't know, there was some other stuff that was brought up, maybe conflicting, but I just wanted to express approval for that, so that's it.
Got it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Laura Gracia? I'll see Laura. Dan, come forward, general public comment. One minute?
Council members, Mayor Garcetti has been using a private email address, which I'm not going to mention here, for city business, for the purpose of obscuring city business. I won't mention which lawyers in his office are sifting through to see which ones I have possession of before they respond with others, but withholding public records, especially from a private email account, especially when it belongs to Mayor Garcetti, is never a good idea. Similarly, Animal Services is withholding records, and I have possession of some of the records. So, the question is, what is the purpose of withholding public records? I obviously have a platform to share them, and it's, it never is going to end well for the city when public information, especially of a dubious nature, is withheld, whether it's Mr. Garcetti, whether it's any of you, whether it's Animal Services. I would suggest giving a little poke to the general managers and the attorneys to make sure records are provided. Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes general public comment. What's before us?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
Desk is clear.
Thank you. Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Corian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I just wanted to give you another reminder, you've all been informed with a letter from my office, but we will be taking up the budget during our special meeting tomorrow. And at that time, I'm sure many of you will want to make motions relating to the budget. Keep in mind that budget motions must be drafted by the CLA. They cannot be drafted by your offices, they must be drafted by the CLA in order to comply with the requirements for the budget. So, please, if you have ideas for your motions, get them into the CLA today, if you can, so that the CLA can prepare those in advance, and we're ready to go tomorrow, we have a packet of motions that we can vote on. When that doesn't happen, it delays the entire council as we wait for the motion mill to process during the day. So, if you can, please, the CLA is available all day today to work on those motions, get your ideas into them. And just as a reminder, anything that will have a budget impact, I will ask the council president to refer back to the Budget and Finance Committee, and the motions will not be voted on until they can be considered by Budget and Finance. But if you want them in the record, if, whatever you want to do in terms of motions, they must be in writing by the CLA, and I would urge you to get them in today.
Thank you. Mr. Sadiel, for an announcement?
Yes, I wanted to let everyone know that we were joined today by the Borindo Neighborhood Association of Pico Union. They were here to observe, and they obviously were able to observe a lot, so they're no longer with us, but I think it's noteworthy to let us know that they were here today.
Thank you. I have an announcement, I'd like to wish our legislative deputy Laura Hill a happy birthday, as she did come in to work, and I just embarrassed her, but we love you, Laura, happy birthday. Any adjourned motions? Can you all rise for adjourned motions? On my left? Members, I do have two adjourned motions. One, I'd like to adjourn in memory of a friend and a municipal leader from a neighboring city of ours, from the city of Avalon, Councilmember Pam Albers, who passed away suddenly last week. Served for the city of Avalon a number of roles since her arrival to the island in 1995, a community activist, former city attorney, a small business owner. Councilmember Albers recently completed the first year of her first term as a member of the city council. A lifelong, passionate public servant, Councilmember Albers stayed engaged with all levels of government and legislation. During her short tenure, Councilmember Albers was an environmental activist who worked towards freshwater sustainability on the island, and played an integral role in expanding the city's plastic bag and straw bans. Recently, she advocated for a citywide ban on pesticides and herbicides that contain harmful chemicals linked to causing cancer such as Roundup. Other goals for her time on the city council included preserving the island's rich historical and cultural heritage, securing the city's financial future, and improving citizen participation in the community's decision-making process. Before beginning her tenure on city council, Councilmember Albers served as Avalon City Attorney for 21 years. She assisted numerous nonprofit organizations on the island, including the Catalina Art Association and Catalina Island Women's Forum, where she served as both a board member and president of the organization. She was also previously voted Avalon Rotary Person of the Year. Our hearts and prayers go out to the entire Albers family, and her colleagues on the city council, and the entire city of Avalon. And lastly, if I can, members, I'd like to adjourn in memory of who we know growing